We're going to call the meeting to order for the City of Iowa City Council for a formal meeting for July 27, 2021. It is just after 6:00 PM, and I'm going to ask for roll call, please.
Burgess?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Sully?
Yes, you hear me?
Yes. Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
All right, well, we are all here, even two virtually. Our mayor pro tem and councillor Weiner is not with us in person today. And then we want to welcome everyone to the city council meeting. I know that there's a lot, a lot of people can be doing, but you're here because you have a passion and love for your city. We're going to start with item number two, which is the proclamations for 2A, which is the Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act was passed on July 26, 1990 to ensure the civil rights of persons with disabilities, and whereas July 26, 2021 marked the 31st anniversary of the signing of the ADA, which expanded access and opportunities for people with disabilities, and whereas the ADA has done this by reducing barriers and changing perceptions and increasing full participation in community life, and whereas the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if we remain committed to continue our efforts to fully implement this act, and whereas Iowa City affirms the principles...
They're just sitting on the thing right beside the chair.
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask that you...
To the west side of the senior center, that would be on the way to the street. If you could be on the street to get that.
Can you please take your conversation outside?
I don't want to have the park in time.
I will come on.
Okay, I think you can have, but I was on the phone to get that. Okay?
Okay. All right.
Okay.
I don't have my hearing, because I can't hear you.
Okay, all right. I'm going to start this over again, because this is a very important proclamation that I want to ensure is given its proper reading. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act was passed on July 26, 1990 to ensure the civil rights of persons with disabilities, and whereas July 26, 2021 marked the 31st anniversary of the signing of the ADA, which expanded access and opportunities for people with disabilities, and whereas the ADA has done this by reducing barriers and changing perceptions and increasing full participation in community life, and whereas the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if we remain committed to continue our efforts to fully implement this act, and whereas the Iowa City affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as set forth and embodied in the ADA, and whereas the Iowa City government and residents are proud to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of our residents with disabilities, and whereas throughout the year and on the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, the City of Iowa City celebrates and recognizes the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommitting our efforts to full, to reach full ADA compliance. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, hereby proclaim July 26, 2021 as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day, and call upon all community members to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies and activities that celebrate the contributions of persons with disabilities and renew our commitment to the Americans with Disabilities Act. And here to accept this proclamation is Mike Hone and Mary Vassi.
As a grateful citizen, a city disability community member, a retired educator, a former chair and board member of Combined Efforts and Uptown Bills, and one who is proud of family members who have faced disability challenges with courage, talent, and persistence, I thank the Iowa City Council for your ADA proclamation and all you've done to make the city more accessible and welcoming to persons with disabilities. I have a college friend who, as a child, contracted polio. Thankfully, she survived, but weak arms and a very weak left leg in a high school without an elevator was meant that she would be regularly marked down late for class. Her parents intervened and helped set up a way she could either manage the distance in time or have excused tardies. Not a great solution, but a few barriers removed. Now, thanks to ADA, new school buildings are built with accessibility as an integral part of the design. Many older schools have adapted with elevators and other accommodations. Since not all challenges are physicals, schools have worked to address learning and behavioral disabilities. There is, as always, more to be done. There are so many organizations and agencies that work on providing assistance and opportunities here. The two I know the most about are Combined Efforts and Uptown Bills. Combined Efforts was begun in the mid-2000s by Janet Schlappko, an Iowa City special ed teacher, who also had experience with theater. She saw many students with talent and desire to perform who were not included in the regular theater and music productions. So she formed a new theater group, one that welcomed anyone with or without disability. It grew out of the high school, city high school space, and became a 501(c)(3), and has grown to have a dance, choir, and theater groups. And every year for many years, all those groups performed for the downtown ADA celebration. I could go on, but I think their T-shirt says it. I'll show you. Okay, Combined Efforts, which is a good thing on itself, celebrating artists and changing perceptions. And I think you can celebrate artists in a lot of fields. There are artists in nursing and just anything, and we're changing our perceptions about them. One more thing, Uptown Bills, the crosstown cousin of Wild Bills, which was located in North Hall, my old high school, by the way, U-HI. If you don't know the Bill Sackler story, it's worth checking out on the internet or in the library. Uptown Bills has been a place where people with disabilities could start small businesses, volunteer, show art, socialize in the coffee shop, attend support group meetings such as AA and brain injury. People who spent time at Uptown Bills often observed that one of the best things about it was that it was a space that welcomed them and where they felt safe. So, thanks to the ADA for being a vehicle for change, and thanks to the allies and advocates. Remember Terry Cunningham used to speak here a lot. He was definitely a good advocate, and for the persistence of the disability community for constantly pushing for more improvements and for keeping us all accountable, and to you all and all you have done, and for this recognition today in celebrating the artists and changing perceptions.
Does that go up? What does? Vertically challenged here. Mayor Teague and members of the Iowa City City Council, I'd like to thank you so much for this proclamation. As a person with a disability, it means a great deal to me, as does the long-term commitment of the City of Iowa City toward making itself much more accessible and welcoming to people with disabilities. And I'm just going to cite a couple examples. One, sadly, this year, we did not have the traditional ADA celebration, but we have some exciting opportunities, and I'm going to share just briefly. But in past years, the city has loyally contributed funding to make that celebration a success and make it very public. This year, despite COVID, in the past year, the city launched the Disability Services Coordinating Committee. It's a, it's a great opportunity for those who have not participated or checked in on it. It's the fourth Friday of the month, 10, via Zoom, and it's a great opportunity for coordination and really bringing disability even more to the forefront than it already is in the City of Iowa City. I just learned today about the accessibility features that are going into the playground on the ped mall. That's exciting for many, many people with disabilities, and it shows foresight on your part to recognize that recreation is an integral part of serving people with disabilities and people with disabilities feeling included in the community. The city sponsored a disability ableism and allyship conference during this past year. Many people with disabilities advocated for removing of off-peak conditional free fares for people, and now that has happened, just goes to show how well you councillors listen. We're most excited to announce, thanks in large part to an effort, a partnership between the University of Iowa and many other groups, including the city. Rachel has been very proactive in keeping us informed of a national, nationally known presenter named Judy Hume, who was involved, was a star of the recent documentary Crypt Camp, Coming to Iowa City. It looks, appears that we don't have a final date, but it's going to be in October. We'll include a fireside chat at Hancher and then a smaller gathering at Film Scene. So I just really believe that it's, that sometimes things get taken for granted, and this is a perfect time for us to really say thank you, leaders of Iowa City, for being so welcoming and walking the talk. Thank you very much.
Great. And I have a proclamation that I'll bring to you now. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Nice to meet you in person after our Zoom a year ago.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody's leaving your seat.
Oh, that's okay.
We are at item number three, 3A, which is going to be a COVID update from Johnson County
Public Health. Sam Jarvis, welcome.
Good afternoon to Iowa City Council Mayor. As always, appreciate the opportunity to provide updates. From our last meeting, I believe, at the joint entities meeting that was just a couple weeks ago, I'll note that not a whole lot has changed, but I'll kind of go through our customary updates on our disease side of what we're seeing with cases here locally, and then our vaccination rates. Throughout most of June, I would say things were fairly quiet, but as of recently, we've seen a small increase in cases. So we're kind of looking at single digits some days, other days we're looking at tens, twelves. So we are seeing a small bump at this point in time. They are primarily unvaccinated persons, so not much has changed in terms of case trends. And so we're still monitoring those, that situation. I will note that as of July 1st, as mentioned previously, the state health department no longer requires us to investigate cases, but we'll continue to make the commitment to do so. During June, we were going to evaluate on a month-by-month basis and see how things were going as it was getting quieter, but now with this change, we'll certainly continue to investigate cases until we know otherwise. And in terms of our capacity to do so, we still have our three full-time disease prevention specialists who are dedicated to this, and then certainly with our contact tracing team that we have at the county, we're roughly at about 20 part-time contact tracers. So we still maintain that capacity. Much of their duties are still contact tracing and disease investigations, but they're also helping us with other vaccine confidence kind of conversations. So we've kind of dual-hatted them in this process where they're also helping us with investigations, but they're also providing information about COVID-19 vaccination, providing a lot of education, whether it's rumor, misinformation, or just providing education about vaccines as we go forward. As many are aware, all three vaccines continue to be studied by our state and federal partners for safety and efficacy. We continue to hear good news that they're safe, they're effective, and that they're really still the best preventative tool for COVID-19. Switching over to our vaccination side of things, we continue to be the community of the county that has the highest vaccination rate in the state. We are, per the state's numbers, 58.6% of our total population, that's everyone in Johnson County, but it's always nice to round up and say roughly about 60%. So we're doing really well on that front. We'd love to make it to 70, 80, and so on. And so really, a lot of our efforts have shifted from large mass vaccination clinics where we're doing thousands, or our partners are doing thousands, where we're trying to get hundreds, to those efforts where we're finding groups of persons, 10, 20, you know, at a time, special events or off-site clinics at either employers, churches, other places. So we continue those efforts as well. I think what's probably most important to note today, at 2:00, the CDC made their statement, which I'm sure many have seen in the news already, that their mask guidance has changed for fully vaccinated persons. We mentioned that with a caveat, though, because it's mask guidance for indoor gatherings, but it's for areas that have high transmission rates of disease but low vaccination rates. And so while we're not within those categories, it is something to note, because we know that people are mobile, and that they travel, and they go from here to other counties, other states, and even abroad. So that is one thing to note, and that we're looking at that guidance, and we'll be making efforts to educate the community so as they make their decisions to visit and travel other places, they can make an informed choice and know what's best to do for their health. So a few other things to note that are probably at top of mind. We've not heard of any other new information about booster doses. That is one thing that we're looking at, and certainly we'll wait for other guidance from the CDC. And then in terms of the age eligibility for other vaccines, specifically Pfizer and Moderna at the moment, for those five to 11 years old, we've not heard any new information on that either. Last estimates were that there would be some movement in September, but we've heard that both vaccines have extended their trials and added more participants, which, from what our hospital partners and others have noted, that will probably delay that timeframe of the opening eligibility. So we continue to kind of wait for that and hope that it happens soon, as I'm sure many parents do as well, and in schools and teachers. And as that progresses forward, we'll continue to share information that we receive from the CDC, the ACIP, which also produces guidance on how to give vaccinations for the age group and that new eligibility. So having said all that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just want to thank you and everybody who's been working so hard at Johnson County Public Health to both keep us informed and to get as many people vaccinated as possible.
Thank you. I'll pass along to the team. It's, you know, this is the easy part, talking about the work, but our staff have been so dedicated over the past five or six days, and so absolutely happy to pass along.
Great. Any other comments? Thank you so much for being here with us today.
Thank you.
Great. We are at item number four through nine with the removal of 8A for a special consideration, separate consideration. Could I get a motion to approve consent calendar with a removal of 8A for a special consideration?
Motion, Taylor.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Sully. And would anyone from the public like to address this topic? I also wanted to note that ADA is being removed because councillor Burgess has a conflict of interest for that item. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please step to the podium. And I did want to make mention that as anything within the consent agenda, CNN01, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Could I get a motion to, and typically I think you step out of the room.
You'd like me to, Mayor?
Please, and thank you.
If you think it was going to be a non-substantive conversation, that she could remain, but...
Okay. Hey, that's, that's fine.
Go in the kitchen.
All right. All right.
I'm of approval of 8A.
All right, could I get a second?
Second, Thomas.
All right, would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please step to the podium. CNN01, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed, a six to zero with one abstention. All right, we will bring her back. We are at item number 10, which is community comment, and this is an opportunity for any item that is not on our agenda to be addressed at this time. We would ask for people to keep their talking time to three minutes. We do have a clock over here for people to take note of their time, and this will only go a minimum of 30 minutes, but a max of 7:00 PM. And this is for any item that is not on the formal agenda. And there is also a podium where you can sign your name and your address before coming to the podium to speak. So if you are ready to speak, then we'll have you come to the podium and state your first and last name and your address, please.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Mary Grabett. I live at 2714 Wayne Avenue, number six. I'm here with a personal problem that has to do with mental health. During the time of the quarantine, they shut, you know, everything was shut down, so elder service and haycap kept delivering this food. So I had boxes and boxes and boxes of it, and most of the food I couldn't eat because it was beans and processed food and all that. A person with normal health, not overweight, not high blood pressure, they could have it. So everybody kept urging me, because my apartment is small, only two rooms, so they kept urging me, put it in the trash. I said, no, I can't put it in the trash. That'd be a sin against God. It's perfectly good food. So what I would do was put it in the building. I live on the outside of the building, excuse me. So I would put it in the inside of the building with a sign on it that says, "Free Food." And it would disappear, because I kept putting it out there, and I still got four boxes to put out. So last Saturday, I was, I went into the house to put another bag of free food in there. And so this man, Jerry, he comes, oh, you've been the one that's been delivering the food. Let me help you in. So I came in and brought the food in, and later on that evening, when I went to, I always leave my door open so I can get air, since I live in a basement apartment, was two big black bags of trash in front of my apartment. So I called Keystone, and the manager knew Jerry from all the other pranks he pulled. Now, he's no kid. He's almost as old as I am. He might be older. And I find out it was him. Is my timer up?
No.
I found out it was him that put the trash in there, in the bag. Now, here's a man who listens for voices from outer space, who's naked in the hallway, who's always bothering the other people who live in the apartment building. Now, I'm tired of this. I'm old, and I live by myself, and I don't want to encounter that man. I called the police. The police even knew who he was. So I called, not that 911, the other one, the non-emergency. So the policeman came out and saw what was in the bags, and so he wanted to put them in the dumpster. I said, no, you're not the trash man. The managers were supposed to send someone to put those bags in the trash. So I haven't been back in the inside of the building, because that's where he lives, and that's where the mailboxes are. So I don't want to have to really, I really, I don't want to have to buy a gun for self-protection so I can stand my ground.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Mary.
Okay, I need some help.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, council. My name is Nicholas Tyson. I live on the east side. So I want to address something that was brought up in the work session. First of all, I find myself in the very strange position of agreeing with councillor Burgess on something, so I just wanted to note that. But when the chief was up here, there were several things that he omitted and a couple of things that he just openly, well, lied about. So the thing that you have to understand about how the county acquired the MRAP in question are the following four things. First, the United States invaded two foreign countries in 2003 and 2004. Those are the countries Afghanistan and Iraq. Now, the reason why these MRAPs exist at all is because they were produced for those wars. And when they were, those wars were drawn down under the Obama administration, the Obama administration used an existing program, the 1033 program, to essentially sell off or get rid of all of the excess military hardware that was created by two imperial occupations. So the thing is, the county acquired this thing in the first place not to protect officers, not to do flood control, not to do disaster relief, like they said at the time. They got it because the Obama administration was desperate to get rid of these things and were essentially giving them away for free. So the Johnson County Sheriff's Office decided to pick one up, and I hasten to note, without ever even informing the Board of Supervisors, who, when they found out that the county then had one, were irate about it. They didn't proceed to do anything about this fact, but the thing is, they acquired the military hardware first, then they invented reasons to use it, not the other way around. So when the chief comes up here and says like, oh, we desperately need this, they didn't desperately need it in 2013, they didn't desperately need it in 2012, or 2011, or 2010. Do you see the pattern here? They didn't need it any of those times, and they didn't need it when they acquired it. So this idea that somehow, like, officers are going to desperately need this to protect themselves from gunfire, it's just not true. It actually wouldn't have done anything on Saturday. What would they have done? Driven it into the ped mall? That shooting happened in an alley. So this whole notion that it's going to protect civilians from gunfire, that it's going to protect police officers, is just BS. It is in fiction, it is a complete fiction. And frankly, I don't want to actually be lectured about the nature of public safety for a man who, by the way, came into this room armed. When chief listen was sitting in that seat right there, and when he stood this podium, he was carrying a deadly weapon. So the notion that somehow he is going to lecture us on what, about what maintains safety is absolutely ridiculous. One final point, the little bit about how they make these decisions very gravely, well, the thing is, the previous county sheriff actually admitted that one time they took the MRAP out simply because someone had locked their keys in the car.
Thank you.
That's all.
Welcome.
My name is Martha Norbeck, 906 South 7th Avenue, and I wanted to take my three minutes to talk to you about climate change. Two weeks ago in Germany, a quiet creek rose 20 feet in a matter of hours. This is not normal. My house in the Longfellow neighborhood is near Walston Creek. In 97 and 2008, it did not flood. If, if we had seen 20-foot rise in Walston Creek in a matter of hours, my house would be flooded. After two historic floods, my house would have been flooded with a rain event like happened in Germany. This is serious stuff. Climate change is happening now, and our actions matter, and we saw it last year when the skies cleared up, because people altogether changed their behavior. And you are in a particularly meaningful position because you are making decisions about the future of our community. Planning and zoning, you have a lot of stuff coming up in the upcoming months, and I want you to be very cognizant of the climate impacts of those decisions. My house was built in 1904. That means today I am living with the consequences of a decision someone made somewhere around 1900 to plat that neighborhood. These decisions have weight for generations. And I've heard council members say, oh, well, low density, high density, maybe it's a matter of opinion. It's not opinion, it's evidence. We need to follow the evidence. Don't, don't use your opinion. It is not about your opinion. We need to look at the evidence. And the evidence says that when you have bigger lots, you have bigger... And the evidence says that when you have bigger lots, you have bigger houses with more stuff in them and they're using more energy, and per capita, energy consumption is greater. GHG emissions are greater. That is the evidence. You don't need an opinion. You just follow the data. So I ask you to bear in mind the gravity of your decisions. You have a lot coming up. And every time P&amp;Z comes up, you need to be like, wow, this is like, I'm making a decision, not for today. I'm making a decision for 100 years from now, 150 years from now. It is changing and shaping the community. And I urge you to carry that gravity with you when you evaluate these projects and be aware that you're making opinion and judgments that affect not only climate, but equity and economy and affordable housing. There's a lot at play here. This is probably the most important category of decisions that you will make as a council member. So please, consider the evidence, consider the gravity. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address a topic that is not on the formal agenda? Please state your first and last name.
James Knapp.
And your address.
And I live at 528 Rundell Street. And we received notice that we will be added to the floodplain. And this has happened over the years, and now I got another notice. I checked with FEMA and other agencies in the government. And the reason that the Ralston Creek floodplain exists where on Long Rundell Street is because the city, when they put a bridge over the creek, which is Muscatine Avenue, they impaired the amount of water that could flow out of Ralston Creek and thereby putting people into the floodplain. And now I've got a notice that this insurance company or the, my mortgage holder is going to start charging me $437 a year for being in the floodplain. When the city should have done something about this, they made the mistake in the beginning. And all the people along Ralston Creek are going to end up having to pay flood insurance when the city could have created a situation where the creek would drain rapidly as it should. That's one of my questions. When will you do something about it? The other information has nothing to do with this. It goes back to a murder that happened in 1966, 55 years ago. And the city has had, the police have had information. They could resolve this issue. They could investigate it. They could go to the people that are involved in it. I've given them all the information they need, and they just put it off. And Ronald Ellipsius was murdered in his grocery store on South Summit Street, May 6, 1966. And the issue was brought up to me by a classmate at a class reunion, my 55th class reunion. And he said, have they ever solved the murder? I said, what are you talking about? He says, well, that grocery store. I says, I don't know anything about it. He says, why do you ask? He says, well, I just thought Kathy did it. Kathy was his girlfriend at the time. And what he was, was curious about whether or not he was out of jeopardy because he should have been investigated along with Kathy. Do you have any questions?
You can just address council.
Turned over to the city police department, and they're not making any advance.
Anything else you would like to state?
Not unless you want to talk about it.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm, I'm not sure if you signed in at the table behind.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
There's a table behind for you to sign in.
I did, I signed in already.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if there is anyone else that would like to address council on any item that's not on the agenda, I welcome. I invite you to come and sign in so that when we're ready to move forward, you'll be ready. Please state your name and address. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Riley Wells, and I live at 1131 South Gilbert Street. I am here today to give public comment on the request by the Truth and Reconciliation Council for approval on a budget of 337,000.
Yep, that is an item on our agenda, and we'll get to that.
I apologize.
Yep, we'll bring you back up.
I'll be sure to sign in when I'm done. I'm Martha Hampel. I live near the corner of Court and Manchester in Iowa City. I just wanted to strongly encourage you to consider all public comment and, and seek out public comment when it comes to your decisions regarding the MRAP and whether or not to acquire a Bearcat. We know that Lonnie Polkrabic did everything he could to avoid public input when acquiring the MRAP. In fact, he didn't even want input from the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. He, he basically did it single-handedly. And I think we should avoid that when it comes to when, what we decide to do next and whether we acquire a Bearcat. I think there should even be a public vote. I would love to see it on the ballot, if that's something you're able to do. But please, this is really important. It's important to the entire community. So please don't take, make this decision without seeking out input from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, I am Caroline Dieterly. I live at 727 Walnut Street. And I would like to at least mention, I listened to the whole discussion of the MRAP that you had in the previous working session. And I think we'd be, we wouldn't be in the situation we are now of even talking about getting rid of it if it hadn't been used in such an egregiously inappropriate way. When this, when the Freedom Riders and the other people interested in the Black Lives Matter and the George Floyd murder were demonstrating, and it was brought out, and we had flashbangs and tear gas and so forth brought to bear as well. And it was because of that and the poor judgment that was exercised or lack of any judgment that was exercised about its deployment then that is causing this uproar now. So, you know, it's hard to have faith in a decision-making process for the use of it when we have the example in front of us of what happened already. And we, I, I don't believe I've ever seen anywhere any mention of any kind of a set policy that has been reviewed by the citizens for when this thing is supposed to be deployed. I mean, here it is, it's a tool, and you've got something there, and people who have it are going to want to use it and so forth. Then there is no policy. So there should have been a policy before the thing ever saw any action at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address a topic that's not on the agenda at this time? Welcome.
I'll be sure to sign this paper when I'm done.
Sure.
So my name is Eric Harris, and I'm just going to speak personally about the MRAP and my personal experience with seeing the MRAP. It was a regular morning, had to be eight to nine o'clock, and my kids were out in front, and they were doing like yard work and stuff like that. And I was in the house, and I was about to come out and help. But they came in terrified and saying that this is a large vehicle that's yelling commands out and barely fits down the street. And they were terrified. They were scared. So the opinion of, that I've heard here today of, it makes people, it makes people feel safe. It makes people feel safe. My kids were terrified and are still terrified by it right now. I, I almost took offense to some of the comments about it's supposed to make people feel safe. Because my family did not feel safe. They didn't know what that thing was at all. And if they're going to continue to use vehicles like that, the fire department uses a lot of vehicles. But at different events, I've seen them let children explore the fire trucks and look and see what it was so they could understand it, not just randomly roll it down the street on the morning and have my children confused. And with that, I yield.
Great. Would anyone else like to address a topic not on the agenda? Seeing no, no one else. We will move on to planning and zoning items, number 11, 11A, rezoning of 1103 and 1125 North Dodge Street. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoned approximately 7.546 acres of land located at 1103 and 1125 North Dodge Street from community commercial with a planned development overlay to a community commercial with a planned development overlay zone. And I'm going to open the public hearing. And welcome. We're going to start with comments from staff, and then we'll hear from the applicant, followed by council questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Danielle Sessman, Neighborhood and Development Services. I'm going to present briefly on this first rezoning action at 1103 and 1125 North Dodge Street. As the item introduction indicated, this is not a change in the base zoning. It's currently an OPD CC2 zone, and it would remain that. It's the location of the North Dodge Hy-Vee. The purpose of the rezoning tonight is basically to amend one of the conditions that was placed back in 2013 when the Hy-Vee store was built to replace a former dairy operation. There was a very specific condition in that agreement that said that adherence with the concept plan, which was filed in 2013, was required. At this time, the Hy-Vee stores throughout the community are adding online grocery shopping and online grocery pickup kiosks and drive-throughs as part of their aisles online program. And they would like to amend their concept plan to show a more permanent developed structure for that operation. They have seen a dramatic increase of online fulfillment orders during the pandemic, but that's also been sustained. And they think that is a business operation they'd like to pursue and would make part of their normal operations. As I mentioned, we will need to amend the CZA, which is the purpose of the rezoning tonight. This shows the parking lot during the pandemic where they've had a temporary facility. As you can see, it's basically shipping containers and carts that roll in and out of that as folks come to pick up groceries. As I said, this would be amending the plan, and I'll show that in a moment. With rezonings, there are general rezoning criteria that need to be met. There's also specific ones for planned developments. We won't get into those since this is really just changing the concept plan, so I'll get to that. This is the aerial image or a plan review of the site. The big box, the big white box on the right-hand side of the screen is the Hy-Vee store. And the area that it would be redeveloping or changing, the parking lot design basically is just to the left of that. It's a long rectangle with some drive-through canopy and covering for grocery pickup. It would be three lanes of pickup. These are scheduled pickups, so you make your online order, and you're given a time to show up to pick up your groceries. So the queue would be managed through that kind of action. It's a very small building, anticipated about 1,000 square feet with a canopy over the drive-up aisles. The surrounding land uses are residential in character. And so as with the original development, there's scrutiny of the screening and landscaping that goes into place. There's been a requirement for landscaping that's been fulfilled on the northwest side of the site between the residential areas. This building would actually be a buffer, a further buffer between car traffic in the parking lot, and they will be adding some additional landscaping as well. This is a color rendering showing several different views of their proposed concept for the online structure. This would be subject to a design review. So actually, the specifics of the design would be reviewed at a future step, and that would be the site plan review and design review step. This slide shows you where we are in the development review process tonight. As I mentioned, there was a previous rezoning, re-rezoning to adjust those conditions. The drive-through lanes are actually, go through another step for a special exception that's reviewed by the Board of Adjustment that has yet to happen. And then, as I mentioned, staff would do design review and issuance of building permits. So based on the review of relevant general and specific criteria, staff did recommend approval of the proposed rezoning with the carrying forward of four conditions originally in that 2013 CZA verbatim, as they were at that time. The addition of a fifth condition and the removal of two conditions that were fulfilled with development as it occurred. So they've been accomplished already. So the conditions that staff recommended include buffer area. As I mentioned, the four conditions that were already carried forward, the buffer area, limitation on signs and where they can be placed. A quality design insurance through a design review process. Some screening and mature tree preservation. And this fifth condition here, basically that the development of the online grocery pickup be generally consistent with the attached plan and go through design review, as I said. This was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it comes to you tonight with a recommendation of approval by them. The CZA has been signed, and the applicant did not choose to go through a Good Neighbor Policy process for this rezoning. The applicant's representative is here tonight, but does not have a presentation. And that concludes my remarks.
Okay, any questions? By council. Here and none, thank you. And I am going to ask for anyone that, from the public that would like to address this topic, to please go to the podium at this time. And you can sign in after you're done. Please state your first and last name. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is John Brown, Director of Site Planning with Hy-Vee. I'm available to answer any questions you have. And if, if you want the, the background on this, I'd be happy to go through the background on it as well. Just let me know.
All right, we had just asked for the applicant. So does council have any questions for the applicant representative? All right. None, no, no questions. Anyone from the public want to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give first consideration?
So moved, Mims.
Second, Taylor.
Counsel discussion.
Honestly, I would rather see people ordering groceries online from local stores than from, from out of state and so forth. This is, and I think that, that, that this sort of, that this sort of regularization of this will be much less obtrusive than the containers and the ad hoc way that the grocery stores around here had to deal with this during the height of the pandemic.
Yeah, this, this does seem to be kind of just regularizing what's already there and enhancing it. So, makes sense.
I would say the need really appeared during the pandemic that this is a great option for various people, especially for individuals that may have medical limitations or even physical disabilities or limitations. So, all right. Roll call, please.
Soli?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 11B, rezonah Hickory Trail Estates. Ordinance conditionally rezoned approximately 48.75 acres of land located south of North Scott Boulevard and west of North First Avenue from interim development, single-family to low-density, single-family with a planned development overlay zone. And this is for a motion to pass and adopt. Can I get one, please?
So moved, Mims. Second, Burgess.
All right, we will start with comments from our staff, and then we'll hear from the applicant, followed by council questions, and then I'll allow for a public discussion at that time.
Thank you, Mayor Danielle Sessman again. I don't have many remarks to make on this one, just general introduction to refresh where this application is located. And that, based on discussion in the previous city council meeting, the applicant has provided the following exhibits, which I'll go back to in a second, which were included in your late handouts to clarify the dimensions of Outlet A. We had some questions about that at the meeting, and it was a little fuzzy, hard to discern. And to provide an updated landscaping plan, Brian Belk with Axiom Development is in attendance tonight, and he'll go through these two slides with you. I do want to say the Parks and Forestry staff of the city has reviewed the landscaping plan for tree species choice and placement and has no objections to it. Additionally, should the rezoning be approved, compliance with the landscaping can, plan can be addressed at the next steps in the subdivision plating process. So I will let Mr. Belk go through these two slides. But I just wanted to point out again where we are in the development process. We're at the rezoning stage here. There would be There would be plating that would follow along afterwards that you would see for the preliminary and final plats, and then site plan reviews as necessary in building permits. Just to refresh again, this is coming with a recommendation from staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I'll turn it back to these two slides and step away.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the time. We've discussed this numerous times, but on behalf of Nelson Development and Hickory Trail, I just wanted to briefly outline the letter that was dated 7/22 and provide it to you in your packet there. And really, the main reason for this was just to address a couple of the concerns that we still heard or saw at the last meeting, those being the land used and buffer space, as Danielle alluded, that we'll talk about here in a second, and then the other being the cul-de-sacs. So with regards to the land use buffer, we did provide an additional exhibit that you see on the screen right now that just describes and shows some additional detail with regards to distances there. As you, most of you know, there's about 14 acres dedicated to Outlet and gifted to the city to create a buffer between the development and Hickory Hill Park. That's approximately 28.8% of the development as a whole that would be gifted, again, to the city as park space. That's shown in, shown in the green space there on the land use map. At the narrowest, you see the buffer is roughly 90 feet wide on that south side, plus an additional 60 foot for the right-of-way, so roughly 150 feet. That's directly south of lots two and three. And then on the western development, the buffer is nearly 100 foot wide in addition to the 60-foot right-of-way, and then continues to expand from there. In those areas where it is narrower, as described earlier, we added additional landscaping in plan at this point to show you what the intentions are there, both with trees, vegetation, native plantings, and everything else that goes with that. And as noted, that was worked through with city, parks, and forestry. So when you add the additional setbacks for the garages and the houses, at the most minimum point, you are no closer than 70, 100, I'm sorry, 175 feet to the current park boundary. Within that area too, you'll note that is full of ravines and wooded areas, looking to preserve the natural areas. Was a specific goal, the comprehensive plan and Northeast District Plan and City Code, which is what we are doing here, as well as adding additional native plantings and vegetation. So if there's any questions on that, happy to answer that. Otherwise, I'll talk about the cul-de-sacs here as well. We can address any items there at the end. In the last meeting, we had heard concern with regards to the omission of cul-de-sacs in this plan, and that was done purposely. We did look at that during the design and throughout the interaction with city staff. And I'll go back to here. That picture shown in the Northeast District Plan was simply just a picture at that time. As we dive into it further, you must consider the topography, the existing vegetation, current City Code requirements, and current policies of the City Department. And so within the letter that we provided to you, that noted numerous examples of City Code and policy where cul-de-sacs are not wanted and is not a result of the development here at hand. So City Code very clearly states the use of cul-de-sacs is limited to specific situations and then depicts as, depicts those which we do not meet here. They're just simply not warranted by the provisions outside, outlined with the current code. We also included some discussions and documentation back and forth with city staff with regards to this item as well. So we, you know, we tried to look at those different options in a good-faith effort, but once that concluded, we were following the direction from city staff, the text of the comprehensive plan and the Northeast District Plan, City Code, and the conditions on the property itself. Happy to answer any other questions.
I don't hear any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. Is there anyone else from the applicant team here? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, I'm Adam Tar, Puig and Pram, on behalf of the applicant in Nelson Development. I want to thank the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and the council for your time tonight. It's a pleasure to be for you. I'd like to say it's the highlight of my day, but that would be a lie. In fact, the highlight of my day, in all honesty, was taking our family dog Willa through Hickory Hill on a hike this morning, and I think I can speak for her and say it was probably the highlight of her day as well. That's because I'm here not just as an advocate for the applicant, but I'm here as an East Sider. And as a longtime East Sider who lives within walking distance of the park, I can say with all sincerity that the park is a treasure. It's one of my favorite things about the East Side, and not just the East Side, but the city as a whole. It's entirely accurate to say that it's a, for me, it's a meditative, relaxive, natural space that is tucked between our neighborhoods and readily accessible to everybody as a result. It's one of the first things I point to when friends who aren't East Siders ask me why I'm such a proud East Sider. Along with our socioeconomic diversity, our blend of well-maintained old and new housing stock, and our sense of community, the park is emblematic of our pride of place. It's also a city park surrounded by private property. Now, many of you campaigned on improving the livability of Iowa City, on good environmental stewardship, and on doing something about the geriatric crisis facing our aging population. Approving this application advances all of those promises. Each of you, when elected, also took an oath to uphold the laws of the state of Iowa. Those laws set out the criteria by which you are to evaluate this application. Iowa Code, or Iowa City Code Title 14, Chapter 3 governs approval of OPDs, of overlay development plans. It directs you to, and I quote, "review the application for compliance with the applicable approval criteria as set forth in Chapter 3." Now, planning and zoning staff, park staff, Planning and Zoning Commission itself, and city council staff since then have repeatedly found that the application meets those criteria and recommended approval. By all accounts, the applicants have in good faith addressed each request or concern on their way to final approval tonight, as we just saw with Mr. Welch's presentation. They've replaced cul-de-sacs with through streets to satisfy the staff's objections to cul-de-sacs. And now to hear that the county, the council is hesitant or is wondering whether or not the absence of cul-de-sacs might be something to count against the application is simply misguided as a result. Now, the applicants have also reduced density. They've single-loaded the street, creating a larger buffer with the park, such that, as Mr. Welch just explained, the minimum buffer between the houses and the boundary of the park is 175 feet. They've provided stream-side buffer zones. They've protected slopes. They have preserved the majority of the tree cover. They've provided for a lower roof on the park side of the senior living facility to protect sightlines. And as you just heard, they have dedicated over 14 acres in Outlet A to buffer and to expand the park, complete with trailheads that will finally extend Hickory Hill all the way to Scott Boulevard. They are also committed to eliminating invasive species from that addition. And to achieve all of this, they have worked tirelessly and in good faith with the city forester, the park staff, and the staff of the city council and planning and zoning, who have all opined that the application not only meets the criteria, but it adds valuable biodiversity to Hickory Hill Park. And as the staff reports have observed, the proposal, quote, "incorporates a variety of housing types, it limits impact to sensitive areas, and it provides an additional over 14 acres of land to Hickory Hill Park." Now, surely some community members will be dissatisfied with anything short of all 48 acres being turned into an expansion of Hickory Hill Park. ACT offered this to the city, and the city declined. But it may be that the decision by the city to decline that purchase for the exclusive purpose of the park was a good development, because the proposal that's before you instead offers the best of all worlds. It expands and improves and protects the diversity of the park while also addressing a vital need for senior housing, including memory units. It adds a quality, single-family housing stock to the East Side. You, as a council, have the historic opportunity to be the city council that expands Hickory Hill Park and simultaneously addresses the geriatric crisis and our desperate need for compassionate senior housing. The criteria set forth in the comp plan and in the district plan, combined under the flexible approach provided for the overlay ordinance, permit the proposal's combination of single-family, low-density homes and senior housing while protecting sensitive areas and growing the park. Because the plan meets the criteria for each as set out in the comprehensive and the district plans, your obligation is to approve the application. Instead, some council members have advanced a very expansive and novel interpretation of the overlay ordinance, seizing on the use of the word flexibility in City Code Section 14, 3A1, as a justification for holding the application to an unrealistic standard in order to reject the application outright, despite the fact that the application is, again, compliant with the comprehensive and district plans. To follow that example would be flying the face of the express language of Chapter 3 of Title 14. Other council members have stated that they wish they had a revised comprehensive plan and district plan that was in place that would permit the city to make other demands and apply other criteria and suggested immediate action to revise those plans. But as the majority of this council has successfully and correctly concluded in prior work sessions and in public meetings, you must apply the law you have, not the law you want. Indeed, the Iowa Supreme Court has made clear that the discretion granted to a city council on zoning matters is not unbounded, and that it is bad faith and an illegality for a council to reject a compliant application out of a motive to alter the zoning ordinance or extract concessions unsupported by the law. In closing, the council does not have to flirt with illegality to protect the park or sensitive areas. You can approve a compliant application with the confidence that your valid concerns and your objectives will be met. Planning and zoning in the council have enumerated several conditions for approval of this proposal, and the city will retain active oversight and authority to see those conditions are met. Now, the applicants, in sum, have agreed to all the city's conditions and offered additional accommodations on their own in good faith. It's now the council's sworn duty to act in good faith tonight and apply the law you have, not the law you want, to accept the overwhelming recommendation of staff and approve the final reading of this application. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else from the applicant team here? Okay. Seeing no one else. I'm going to ask for the public that would like to address this topic. Why don't I get a raise of hands first of individuals that want to address this topic? Okay. And I'm going to ask everyone to, as you come up, make sure that you sign your name a little bit ahead of time so that we can try to have the next speakers come up right when that one is done. And everyone will have three minutes. There are a lot of people here, which I really probably should, I don't know if council want to drop it to two, not yet, but we'll, there's quite a few people here. Welcome. Public discussion is open.
I'm Caroline Dieterle. I'd like to know whether the council actually officially declined the chance to purchase this from ACT, this land?
And we just want you to share your thoughts with us, please.
Well, I want to know, first of all, whether you actually, by vote of the council, declined to buy this land from ACT when it was offered to you, as the previous speaker alleged.
And again, this is an opportunity for you to share with council.
Well, if the, if the council actually voted to not accept this chance to buy the land for the park, I don't think that our news media, you know, did a very good job of letting us know that. It was an outrageous decision to turn down this opportunity. This land really belongs as part of Hickory Hill Park. And Martha Norbeck, in a previous comment, was talking about her house being built in 1904, and that the people who made the decisions about that, you know, now she's living with that. Well, people who, you know, assuming that our civilization will even persist, considering the idiotic things that we're doing and climate change and everything, if it does, and we do have children and grandchildren and so forth, great-grandchildren, I don't think they're going to look back on this development here in this land as being a wise use of the land, that it really belongs as part of the park, and the city should use its eminent domain, if nothing else, to get it. Eminent domain was used flagrantly in the Iowa City area in the 1970s to dispossess all kinds of people of valuable property. And then they turned around and sold it to developers rather than having it be used for a public purpose, which is what the eminent domain law was created for, bridges, streets, parks, et cetera. Well, this is for a park. And if we can't go back now and buy it from ACT under their previous offer, then we should have it condemned and made part of the park. People in the future will really regret the loss of this chance to put this land into this park. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll have you come to the podium first, and you can sign after, please, or, yep.
I'm Bill Signan, and I live at 833 Cypress Court. And I actually have a copy of the Northeast District Plan. And in the plan, it specifically states here regarding this property, it specifically states no direct vehicular access to the park or through streets adjacent to the park are proposed. Instead, the residential development nearest the park is shown on cul-de-sacs, plural, cul-de-sacs, and pedestrian access to Hickory Hill Park is encouraged. That's what it says right, right in the plan. There's no ambiguity to that. It's clearly stated. Over the past 10 years, we have heard on more than one occasion, a planning and zoning staff member referred to a past decision regarding rezoning in the Bluffwood community as, oh, that was a mistake. What we do not want, that, we don't want to hear, oh, that was a mistake again, especially with this proposal, which can have significant ramifications on the park and pedestrian and motorist safety. So this is my understanding of how the process works. Planning and zoning puts forth a recommendation, and then city council, the elected representatives of the community decide if the plan is acceptable or not. If it's, if it's not acceptable, then recommendations to amend it can be offered if it seems appropriate. It is not a guaranteed rubber stamp for P&amp;Z recommendations. Otherwise, why have this process at all? So your vote tonight is to see that the Northeast District Plan is upheld. By doing that, your vote will help sustain the quality of life in Iowa City. It can be amended. Thank you.
Thank you. If you can sign your name, please, or leave your sticker. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilor, staff. I'd like to second what Caroline said.
Please state your.
I think that the city has an obligation to explain. My name is Laura Ruth. I live at 828 Dearborn Street in the Longfellow neighborhood. I think the city has an obligation to explain to the citizens why they took a pass on buying this land. It's a first I've heard of that, and it's horrifying to think that we're actually at the last vote, and that's really new information that suddenly we're just going to pretend like we didn't hear. So I challenge you all to take that seriously, and we need to figure out when that happened, and was that actually a legitimate process whereby the city declined, because I sure wasn't aware of it. I'd like to address some of the arguments that have come up through this process regarding this rezoning and development proposal. And I've heard these arguments from city staff. I've heard them be made by city council members and the development group itself. The one that I'm finding most troubling, because it keeps popping up at the podium, is that the city's going to get sued if we don't approve this development. Feds and lawsuits are pretty common, and surely you all hear this sort of bluster all the time. In this case, based on the rumors that have been circulating, the threat of litigation is bullying of the worst kind. It's Trumpian, in fact. Just because someone threatens to sue doesn't mean they will actually win. And just because someone decides to sue doesn't mean they actually will. Finally, I would remind each of you that you do not work for the city attorney. The city attorney works for you. I would encourage you to not take instruction from staff, but have the courage of your convictions and do the right thing. The second argument that I have heard repeatedly is that we need more senior and memory care housing. That may very well be true, but that really isn't the issue at hand here, and I've seen no data to support that assertion. It's just been used as a justification for this development. If this whole boondoggle is about senior housing, then great, let's have a future conversation about that, about land use and senior populations. And let's make our decisions based on objective data, not conjecture. The argument about needing senior housing does not warrant an affirmative vote tonight. Third, the argument that keeps coming up is that it's private land development is inevitable. I guess my rebuttal is pretty direct. I guess my rebuttal is pretty direct. While yes, it is private land, development of green space, and especially this specific piece of land, is neither inevitable nor desirable. And such a defeatist attitude is entirely unacceptable, in my opinion. For our city's elected officials, it's antithetical to leadership itself. You, the city council, have the power, and I would say the obligation, to change the trajectory of this proceeding. The city has authority in matters of zoning and land use. You can and should buy this land and expand Hickory Hill Park.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Please state your first and last name and your address.
Hi, my name is Casey Court. I live at 435 Rundell Street, and I am the Chair of the Board of Friends of Hickory Hill Park. And we are opposed to this project still, because it does not meet, is not in compliance with the Northeast District Plan. I would like to comment also on citizen participation. Since we've gone to this live format, people are not able to comment on Zoom, and we still are in a pandemic, so I would encourage you to pursue that. So when Hickory Heights was getting developed, the big houses you can see from inside the park, there was a lot of unorganized protest against this. And it actually, you know, obviously it lost, because people didn't follow any sort of planning process. So a lot of the original members of Friends of Hickory Hill Park got together and decided, "Well, we need to work with the city and figure something out." Well, what came out of that is the Northeast District Plan. And now, if you're going to vote against that, I ask myself, "Why bother?" We were told that this is how we protest, is we have to, you know, and then you're going to just throw the plan out the window. I'm sure the city manager would love for us to not bother, so he could just throw the plans out, and green light projects, like the two that were turned down at the commission, terrible plans. You know, they didn't in any way meet the Northeast District Plan. So as you, you as elected officials can say no. This is not what the community wanted then, this is not what the community wants now. It's in the plan, and this is, this particular proposal does not meet that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Yep, welcome. State your name and address, please.
My name is Noah, and I live in Iowa City. And I'm here to, well, first off, to second his comments on the Zoom. You should make it accessible, as we are in the middle of a pandemic. And the CDC has actually recently said to have masks for indoors, and, one, two, three, four, oh yeah, none of you are wearing any. So thank you for that. Second of all, well, third of all, do not pass this developer's plan, like as most of you typically have said, it's trash, and it is destroying the environment, which I mean, I know, like, y'all don't care about the environment, I have to actually do anything to change it and just ruin it for my life, and I really appreciate that, so keep that up. But actually, you could try to do something different and do that, and buy back the land and get that park back going. All right? And also, comment, answer people's questions. It's not that hard. You can be responsive, you don't have to just sit there silently staring, like, "I don't know what y'all are doing, why you can't answer people's questions? Why can't you answer my questions?"
Please stay to the topic.
Why can't you answer my questions?
Thank you. Any more comments on Hickory Trail?
Yes. Why can't you answer questions?
This is an opportunity for you to speak to council.
And when you can speak to us when we ask questions, and actually answer our questions.
Any more comment?
So that's a no?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Resign. Quit. All y'all quit, fire Jeff.
This is not, this topic, any, anything else about Hickory Trail Estates?
Quit your jobs and fire Jeff.
Welcome. And please sign the sign-in sheet, please.
I already signed it.
I know you did.
Martha Norbeck, 906 South Seventh. So I appreciate the position you're in. I guess my first question is to the developer, you know, when I saw this play out, I'm like, "How are you going to make money off of a single loaded street? I don't even understand that." And I feel like you've gotten ourselves boxed into, like, "Oh, we started down this road, and we're just going to make small tweaks." And I know how that works from a design standpoint. You just wind up, you're like, "Well, we can't go back now." Gosh darn it, I wish you just went back and just said, "Oh, we hear these comments, let's try again, let's do a different plan, development overlay." Because this, continually tweaking an idea that was a bad idea in the first place, it's just not working, and I honestly don't know how you're going to make money. I'm actually really legitimately concerned about your ability to make money on this project, because you're going to be using the house, senior housing to subsidize it. So I asked the developer to consider, like, "Do we really want to proceed with this?" Like, whether, however this vote goes, like, is this really wise? I think I also want to comment on this P&amp;Z process, because I am still, you know, the South District Plan has been going great, I'm super excited about that, lots of good things coming out of that, but the climate stuff is not fully integrated in staff thinking yet. It should be economy, ecology, equity, economy, ecology, equity, again, and again, and again, every thought. You're really good at the economy part, the city budget works great, you guys are really responsible about that. But gosh darn it, we have two legs of the stool that are not getting enough attention, and I feel like this process is a great example of how that's gone wrong. You can't just take whatever the developer brings to you and says, "We're going to work with these pieces the way you have them set out." We have to have a vigorous dialogue about the purpose of our community in the long term. And that needs to happen with staff, with the developer, in that plan development overlay. It's a great process, and I don't think it worked here. And the opportunity, I feel, was missed. And I want to talk about this buffer, because I go back and I keep looking at the letters from Friends of Hickory Hill, I look at that Northwest Plan, and I look at that green area that links the ridge to the waterway, and I sent a letter on this topic, that that ridge provides a valuable ecological connection between the park and that critical waterway that feeds the Ralston Creek waterway. And if you put a road through that, you are bisecting that ecological buffer. You are really messing up that ecological buffer. So yeah, the trees are nice, it helps with the visual buffer, but putting a ribbon of concrete where water and chemicals will just wash off, and people's perfectly manicured lawns with all those chemicals running into the waterway, that is not an ecological buffer.
Thank you, Martha. Welcome.
Hello, I already signed in.
Great.
I am Allison James, 1181 Hots Avenue. I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, although we've already established you're not going to answer them. I wanted to first ask, did you all watch the P&amp;Z meetings leading up to this vote, or not? Because I was there on Zoom for those P&amp;Z meetings, and I sat and listened as dozens of impassioned residents waited up to two hours to give their comments against this development, over and over again, meeting after meeting. Meanwhile, what I also noticed was the few people that spoke out for this development, a quick Google search revealed that they were not just simple residents, they were posing as residents, but they were actually former and current employees of ACT. Just happened to show up and say, "Hey, this is a great idea, we love this development." Okay, that's a huge conflict of interest right there, according to me. But, you know, go back and watch those videos, because there's those kinds of things going on, this huge outpouring from the residents against this, and then the propping up by some of the ACT associates. I also wanted to bring up a comment that hasn't been discussed much, and that is that the accessibility of the park will not be improved with this plan. My next question, how many of you use the Seventh Avenue entrance to get to Hickory Hill? Do you even know it exists? Probably not, right? You're going to go through the cemetery, you're going to go Bloomington entrance or First Avenue, because there are parking lots, gateways to the park, entrances to the park. The Seventh Avenue entrance, on the other hand, is just a bunch of rich people's backyards, where you basically have to park on the street in front of these upper-class households to get into the park. It's not welcoming, it's not inclusive, it doesn't even honestly feel safe for a lot of people to walk through that neighborhood to get to that entrance. And that's exactly what you're creating with this development here. Now, there's an opportunity to put in a gateway to the park, so that people on, like Scott Boulevard, can come down and enter here, can park, can put their bikes up, can, you know, feel like they're invited into the park. But that's not what this plan is here. This is just a bunch of very rich people's backyards that are going to de facto consider Hickory Hill to be part of their property. So I urge you to vote no. Voting no is not saying you don't want any development, it's just saying you don't want this thing. And especially Councilmember Weiner, please vote no, make the developers do the right thing, because they're not going to do it on their own. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, my name's Ash Shields, I live at 30 Brookfield Drive here in Iowa City. I am maybe like a five to seven-minute walk to be in Hickory Hill. So I use it a lot, and I have dogs and kids, and yeah, I'm just one of those citizens. And I think that, like, I represent a lot of people, I definitely that believe the same thing I do, that, you know, there isn't anything that we want to see in this 40 acres than the park expansion. It's like Caroline said, it is part of the park, and to me, the Hickory Heights Lane is an eyesore. It's an eyesore. When you are in that park, enjoying that, like, beautiful piece of nature, Hickory Heights Lane is an eyesore. And it's, it makes me kind of sad that that's even there at all. So, so yeah, I guess I just kind of don't understand where, how we got to this point. And it would be my vote that the city of Iowa City buys that land, makes it part of the park, and I hadn't even thought about what Martha said about the, like, water distribution, if you're putting a road through the park, you know, the dam in Hickory Hill Park made it so the creek, the upper Ralston branch that is in my backyard, it didn't flood anymore after the flood that happened, I think, in around, like, 1977, after that dam was built, it, that doesn't flood anymore. So what kind of water ramifications are we going to have if we build a street, a whole street and put that much concrete in the park that is north of where a lot of houses are? So please vote no.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Dawn Palowski. I live at 1201 South Gilbert Street in Iowa City. Thank you for listening to the opinions of community members on this topic. I'm also concerned that it doesn't follow the comprehensive plan. And I'm wondering if there are any numbers on if the property tax value of the proposed development would outweigh the costs that the city will have to provide to build the road, install utilities, sewer, water, fire, police services, and to a memory care facility, I'm guessing that there's going to be a lot of traffic and employees in that area. And I saw another item on the agenda that said it was maybe $465,000 to replace a sewer. So I'm just wondering how those costs are going to add up. I would also like to address climate change on this topic. I've read the Climate Action Plan, and I don't believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that it includes land use in our emission counts. I also know the waste produced is one of the biggest areas. And I will share my very unpopular opinion, I am anti-development. If we're going to develop, I think we should use materials that are being thrown away from other projects, that are sitting in the landfill, that are increasing the methane coming off the landfill. I think Iowa is going to be a place that people are going to come to when they can't live in their countries anymore. So I would just like you to think really hard about who we want that land to be owned by. Do we want it to be owned by 40 single-family homeowners? Or do we want it to be owned by the community and at least support affordable housing?
Thank you. Welcome. And did you sign the sheet?
I did, yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jason Napoli. I live at 2659 Hickory Trail, and I also serve as Vice Chair of Friends of Hickory Hill Park. I'd like to thank Mayor and Council, Jeff and your staff, thank you very much for taking the time tonight. You clearly have a very thankless job, and, you know, I think what you're doing for our city is just fine, and, you know, it's, we should, even though we oppose, many of us oppose this, we should stay on task and on topic with our, with our opposition. The opposition, the opposition of this project has been disadvantaged, scolded, falsely accused, and threatened for the past seven months, starting with the Good Neighbor Meeting back in December. Many of us, the week of Christmas, no less, when that meeting was scheduled, showed up and provided feedback to city planning staff. That was not shared with planning and zoning until multiple follow-ups were made to make sure that happened. Now we go to the first planning and zoning meeting in February, 125 members of the public showed up, 125-plus. What happened? We were scolded by a commissioner for showing up, for showing up, and we were told we only show up when things matter to us. That's totally true. Couldn't be any closer to the truth, that's why we show up, when things matter to us. But, you know, we persevered, and, you know, we got a reasonable vote after city staff rubber-stamped this through. We've heard a lot from the developer tonight about city staff approved this, city staff approved that. City staff has been approving this since the beginning, okay? Even when it didn't resemble whatsoever of the Northeast District Plan, made some tweaks, made a couple more tweaks. But, you know, it just really seemed, and this is not a personal attack on any staff member, but it just seems that no matter what the development, the developer was going to propose, it was going to go through. So no kidding, the city staff approved it, because that's been the case all along. Now you fast-forward to the second and third planning and zoning meetings. We were, the public was threatened by the seller of this land, and was falsely accused of vandalism and trespassing, and, you know, all these, like, you know, really important, you know, accusations. Well, I mean, when you, the seller is one of the largest employers in our city, do you think those employees are going to continue speaking up against this when their leader is actually condemning, is falsely accusing the public? No. So we're being told that we should show up when things matter to us, but there's many things that have been happening in the background that are discouraging people's participation. And that's really sad. You know, I think we live in a community where we should all be able to freely, you know, freely participate and have, and have these voices. You know, back, you know, when it comes to the plan, you know, follow the Northeast District Plan, but just know how much the, this opposition has been so strong, and you got veiled threats from the Developers Council on, on planning and zoning, I mean, there's virtually, there was veiled threats on you today. You know, if we're not, if we're not going to have your voice in this, then let's just have a decision made between the city manager and the developer, and leave this process out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Arturis Kalnans. I live at 44 Evergreen Place in the Bluffwood neighborhood, that's pretty close, about a 10, 15-minute walk to Hickory Hill Park for me. I greatly enjoyed the park, I think, no matter what the outcome of, you know, this decision, we will continue to enjoy the park. But I think approving this proposal would be detrimental to the park overall. And let me just read a little bit, this is something I wrote in a letter. In particular, I want to focus on the senior care facility, particularly memory care, because my father recently passed away from Alzheimer's, he suffered from that for several years, so I'm very well-versed in exactly what a memory So I'm very well versed in exactly what a memory care facility is. This one probably is not going to be much different. And I, it's just not an appropriate use of the land. And in the zoning and planning meetings, we were so focused on the views, the watershed, other issues, it wasn't really until the last meeting and I too, I attended all three meetings from start to finish. First one ran four plus hours. So nobody really paid attention to, well, what is a memory care facility? What is this going to entail? What is this going to look like? They showed us a beautiful diagram or, you know, beautiful picture, a simulated picture of what the facility looked like. And sure, it looks fairly attractive. But this is an institutional, commercial business. This is not residential housing. This is not senior housing. This is, this is an institutional care facility. And just, you know, five points I want to make. It requires employees working around the clock 24/7, taking care of these memory care patients. I know when my father was, you know, my father was in this kind of stage of care. The care needed is 24/7. People will be coming and going all hours of day and night into this residential area. There will constantly be loading dock deliveries, food deliveries, linen, there will constantly be waste removal, trucks backing in and out, leaving their engines running all day long, you know, backing up noises, beep, 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 that you can hear from half a mile away. Ambulances will be coming in 24/7. It will flood the area with artificial light 24/7, will be very detrimental, I think, to the wildlife in the park. And one thing also that hasn't been mentioned, and I speak from, you know, personal experience of my father, when residents will go into such a facility, they're in no position to enjoy the park. You know, for my dad, a big trip was to walk out into the hallway and come back into his room, walk up and down the hallway maybe. That is my experience with what a memory care facility is. It was portrayed as though these seniors would be happily enjoying the park. Maybe some of them will, I'm not, I know there's part of the facility that may be for people and, you know, not such, that would not require such serious care.
Thank you.
But this is just not the appropriate place for such an institutional, commercial facility.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Brandon Ross. I live on 1822 Rochester Avenue, Iowa City, Iowa. Thank you very much, City Council and members of the community and related. I do believe that the public has had a tough time keying into this because of the COVID restrictions. I'm an at-risk person. To come here was a big deal for me. The, I voted for the people and the council to, to do this kind of action. This was, this is really the action, which is to protect our ecological park, the park and the city and, and all its great things. To say no when there is a grab by capital, a grab by development to take land, this is a land grab. This is just a land grab. That's all it is. We have a beautiful natural preserve there. And the council is elected to be our buffer, to be our protectors against the toughness of, of capital and the developers and money who will come in and they will take everything. They will take all, and that's what they do. And during this COVID crisis period, developers continue on. Capital keeps, keeps rolling as fast as it can. When the developer gentleman, the gold watch and the suit came in with the haircut, you know, he looked very nice. He started off by saying, I like to go to the park. I like to take my kids. I have children. Everyone likes children, right? How many people like children? I mean, what am I supposed to say to that? I own department stores and shopping centers. I voted for Donald Trump, but I want to keep the park. You know? Is that what I'm supposed to say? I mean, I'm a horrible person, but I want to keep the park. I mean, that's regarding the place for elderly, they need places like ecumenical towers that are downtown with amenities. People don't need to be put out in the middle of nowhere. So that argument is ridiculous. And then the whole thing about telling the council in kind of harder words that this is the law and you must do this. This is another strategy of the money. The money loves this strategy. That's how they take everything that the city has. Every little square inch, every possible thing to suck out all the wealth in the town. Well, we're here not to allow them to suck out all that wealth. We've approved of a lot of stuff that we know now that we should not have. And in this case, this is nothing more than a money grab. This is, you can look at all the little details and things, but when, when the day is over, the city council can say no. And you have other options regarding this. Protect our environment, protect our city, protect the ecology, protect the people, thousands upon thousands of whom make use of that area. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome in. Did you sign in?
Oh, yeah.
And you can sign in when you're done.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Great, thanks.
Sure.
So my name is Matthew DeForest. I live on Hots Avenue in Iowa City. And I don't have a whole lot to say. Lots of speakers have said most, most things I had in mind. But I would say that, yeah, that I am not from Iowa. I recently, three, four years ago, moved to Iowa City. And Hickory Hill Park is the gem of Iowa City, being from places with wide open spaces. I talked to friends who can't believe that I can exist in Iowa and the first thing is Hickory Hill Park. And it is, it is what makes Iowa City livable to so many people. To put in this development is going to completely change the, the aspect of the park that is so appealing. What is so appealing is that you can get lost in nature. Already with the encroachment, the recent, more recent developments, you feel like you're in somebody else's country club and it's just going to make that 10 times worse. It's really going to be a disaster. I also participated in all the Zoom meetings with, with the zoning commission and that was incredible to watch from the first iteration with one vote yes and then tiny, tiny changes and tons of bullying. The bullying is crazy. ACT clearly thinks that they can do anything they want. And it's not just veiled threats, as we're spoken about earlier. It was very clear threats about threatening people to, with trespassing if they stepped over the line and then putting up new signs and, you know, for an essential wilderness. Yeah, there's also the fact that it doesn't comply with what has been stated as the plan for that section of town. And once it's gone, it will never come back. This is your only chance to stop this. It's, it's very important and I very much hope that you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome. Please state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Ariane and 1010 Fairchild. I'm just going to be very short. Basically, I've grown up in Iowa City. I've lived here my whole life. Hickory Hill Park has been just like this amazing space of healing for me. Like I grew up there, I went sledding there. One of the things that I really love about the park is I can just like, you can sit up on the hill and just there's like almost no buildings for like, like what looks like miles around. And I'm just really concerned about the, just a further encroachment on these natural spaces. You know, it's been, you know, proven that nature heals. Like it's just, there's something just very healing about going out in Hickory Hill Park and listening to the birds and just it's, I'm in my, I'm just very concerned about this development having just the ecological impact, disrupting wildlife, displacing wildlife. And I just, I'm, I just don't support this further development of the space. It's just, I mean, I just, yeah, once again, I, I grew up in Iowa City and Hickory Hill Park was just like, just really, it's a space just to visit and to go to and where you felt like you were in this oasis and where you didn't hear like city traffic and everything. It just, it just felt like you were just like out in the middle of nowhere. So that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Myla Grady and I live at 125 Post Road. I've had the pleasure of hiking, running, skiing and sledding in Hickory Hill Park with my family and friends since I moved here from the south side of Chicago in 1974. And it was a very noisy existence growing up in Chicago. I am opposed to the current proposed development for several reasons, but primarily for safety concerns due to the density of this development, which includes both homes and the assisted living facility. First Avenue is a two-lane street with a steep grade. I cannot imagine added traffic turning at the corner of Hickory Trail and First Avenue. If you've ever driven down First Avenue on an icy winter morning, you will understand that it's a bit of an adventure. I'm very concerned with what could happen during the change of shift at the assisted living facility when there is added traffic. During the warmer months, there are many bikes and joggers using the area, further contributing to congestion and safety issues. There should not be a through street for safety reasons. As someone who is a nurse and who has worked as a geriatric care manager, I am passionate about advocating for excellent care of older adults. We do have a tsunami of aging in this country. However, this area is not appropriate for a high-density assisted living facility. We are also experiencing a tsunami of anxiety in our culture. Anxiety disorders affect 40 million adults in the U.S. and 25% of children between the ages of 13 and 18. Spending time in nature reduces anger, fear and stress and reduces the production of stress hormones. What we see, hear and experience impacts our mood and how our nervous, endocrine and immune systems work. Nature soothes, heals and restores our beings. Time spent in nature connects us to each other and to the larger world. Eliminating the through street, adding cul-de-sacs and not using this land for a high-density assisted living would improve this development and be more compliant with the Northeast District Plan. I encourage you to carefully consider the impact of this application on the safety and the health of this community. I appreciate your patient listening to the public and hope that you will choose to preserve this very unique, quiet and restorative area of our beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome. Please state your name and your address.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Teague and councilors. My name is Deb Cobb and I live at 2517 Mayfield Road in Iowa City. Being Iowa City natives and multiple decade residents of Iowa City, my husband Stu Cobb and I would like to express our concerns about the proposed rezoning application of Hickory Hill Estates. As frequent hikers in Hickory Hill Park, which we love, we feel the urgency to protect this unique natural habitat, not just for the physical and mental well-being of those that enjoy the park now, but as stewards of the environment for future generations. We believe that there should not be a continuous through street from Scott Boulevard to First Avenue, traversing along the edge of Hickory Hill Park. We are convinced that a through street would negatively impact the integrity of Hickory Hill Park, contribute to unacceptable noise levels and pose serious safety concerns at the intersection of Hickory Trail and First Avenue to drivers, pedestrians and wildlife. In addition, the proposed senior living facility should have direct access to a primary street as opposed to a secondary street like Hickory Trail. If not, this facility with 100-plus residents will result in a major increase of traffic on streets that aren't designed to accommodate this. Please, I urge you to vote no, we urge you to vote no, to show your support and to show your support for the hundreds of Iowa City residents who have voiced their concerns and disapproval of the rezoning proposal. And please uphold the directives of the Northeast District Plan. This is a critical vote to ensure that any development preserves a natural habitat of Hickory Hill Park and promotes the health and well-being of those that find a sanctuary in this very unique natural treasure of our beloved city. Thank you for your careful consideration of this very important issue.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Excuse me, my name is Anne Sinon and I live at 833 Cypress Court. I'm not going to repeat things that were already said tonight and were very, very well, very well said, but I would just like to just enforce the fact that we really hope that you as councilors, those of you who have not voted already against this application, to please seriously consider voting against it tonight. We are very much, the, the Northeast District Plan, we feel was very, very well thought out. And particularly when it comes to this application, we feel it should be adhered to. We do not want to have the through street. We do not, we are not opposed to development. We understand this is private land and so it should be developed, but we think there could be a much better plan put in place. And we ask you to please deny this and ask for an amendment in order to have the cul-de-sacs put back in that were put in in the Northeast District Plan and are designed for safety reasons and also to preserve the character and integrity of the, of the park. I would also just like to comment that one of the developers, Mr. Clark, has Tamarack Estates Development, which is an ongoing development. And it's just a short distance from the proposed Hickory Trail Estates. And it had a cul-de-sac approved by planning and zoning and also by the city council. So I would like to ask that you do the same and ask for cul-de-sacs to come back into whatever development's going to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Alex Baker. I reside at 1010 West Benton Street. And I come here today for two reasons. Number one was in support of one of my friends who is here tonight, who invited me here. And the second reason is because Hickory Hill Park holds a very special place in my heart. You know, it was one of the first places when I came here to Iowa City that I absolutely fell in love with. It's just such a serene place where you can easily lose yourself in the nature. And it just really disheartened, disheartens me from all the things I'm hearing in terms of everything that I hear tonight. You know, and the big question is just, we don't really know what's going on here. You know, we don't know what impacts this is going to have on the, on the ecology of the park. We don't know what impact this is going to have in the environment, not just at the park, but the entire city. We don't know the impact of the cost that this is going to have and whether or not it's going to actually generate the revenue that it's supposedly supposed to, or whether it's going to even cost more to upkeep this part right here through more investment into streets and social services that are going to be required to maintain that part of the park. So, and I just find it very disconcerting that, again, there has been so, there's been such a lack of communication between the city council and the, and the people here tonight. You know, the fact that we didn't even have very, information available, that we had the chance to buy back this part of the land is an absolute shame. We should have taken that opportunity. We should have been known that we had the chance to take that opportunity because it's clear that we should have taken that land and made it a part of the park, park fully as a buffer zone. So I urge upon the city council to listen to their better angels and, you know, vote this proposal down and do something to get that park back into our hands because it's not ACT's park, it's not, you know, the developer's park, it's not the city government's park, it's our land and we want it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? If so, please come to the podium at this time. Seeing no one, council discussion.
I'll start. First of all, I wanted to start by thanking the countless numbers of the public that we've been hearing from. I've been struck by all of your comments, your love for Hickory Hill Park and as somebody mentioned, the perseverance. It's, it's truly amazing. And I would encourage my fellow council members to feel that passion expressed by these residents. These passionate feelings shouldn't be ignored. At the last meeting, I stated my thoughts and beliefs about this ordinance for rezoning, so I won't repeat them now. But I will say again, so I won't repeat them now, but I will say again that what is in the comp plan and the Northeast District Plan should be followed. They were written in the best interests of the neighborhoods and the community, and it shouldn't matter whether they are five years old, 25 years old, or even 50 years old. It still exists in writing and should be followed and not ignored. I continue to believe that this plan does not comply with either of these and should not be approved. I will again be voting no.
I would echo Counselor Taylor's comments in terms of thanking the members of the public for your passion, for your dedication to following this process through and to giving your input. I know it's frustrating and discouraging at times when you come here and ask questions and we don't respond, and I will just tell you that that is a practice that has been in place for a long time because otherwise we end up in dialogue, back and forth, and we could be here all night trying to answer questions as we go down various rabbit holes. So when you have questions, I certainly encourage all of you to reach out to council members, staff, whoever, to try and get those questions answered ahead of time. We're more than happy to answer those or to dig up the answers and get them if we don't have them ourselves. One of the questions that has been asked is if the city had the opportunity to buy this land. I can honestly tell you, I don't know. I don't. So it's not something that I recall ever having come to council in the 11 and 1/2 years that I've been on council. So I don't know if the offer was made, I don't know if it was made, if it was a decision from staff that just was like, it's too much money and it's not the kind of parkland we want. I don't know. I don't know. When I look at this process and look at this land, and we were talking earlier in our work session about the district plans and how those need to be updated and how they are done with ideas and, I can't think of the word I want, but they're not all set in stone. There are aspirational aspects to those, and certain things change over time. And one of the things I feel like I've heard the most about is the difference between having the cul-de-sacs in there and having the through street. And at the time that that plan was done, cul-de-sacs were pretty common and used widely throughout the city. And since that time, for many reasons, and primarily safety reasons, flow of whether it's garbage trucks, ambulances, et cetera, the city in general does not approve cul-de-sacs unless it tends to be a very unique situation. Typically, the ones I remember have been geographical, where it's been almost impossible to do a through street. So from my perspective, in reading all of the minutes, et cetera, from the P&amp;Z meetings and the comments both by the public, listening to staff comments, and the P&amp;Z members themselves, I do believe that this plan meets the district plan. It is not exactly the same, but I do believe that with the flexibility and the, that can be had there, that I think it does meet that. Some of the comments I heard in email or signed emails were concerning. I'm not sure where this information came from, and certainly I have not heard it tonight, but I do want to mention it publicly. Some people saying that we were selling parkland. The city is not selling parkland. People saying that we own this land and that we should not be selling this land. The city does not own this land. It is privately held land, which I believe people here tonight are completely understanding of. It does have an interim development zoning, and so the property owner does have a right to develop it. So the option of it being bought by the city is gone. That's long past. They have the right to develop, so the real question for us tonight is whether or not we believe that it meets the requirements for that comp plan and fits in with what should be in that Northeast District. For me, the single-loaded, primarily, single-loaded street fits in with that. The buffer was, we talked about earlier, and I think gives us a significant, significant buffer between the current park border and not only the street, but also certainly the houses. I would certainly encourage Friends of Hickory Hill and the city to try and work together on the Hickory Heights area and get some buffering, tree buffering done in that part of the park. So I will be voting for this. I certainly understand the concerns, and I understand that, you know, it's not necessarily an ideal development and different people. We've had people be against the assisted living or the memory care unit. We've had people say that they don't see a problem with that, but I think in the overall scope of things, it does meet those North District requirements, and it does have the interim development status, in which case the developer has a right to have a development approved. I'm not saying that they have the right to have this development approved. They have the right to have a development approved, and I feel that this one will work.
I too would like to thank everyone for your participation. This has been a long, challenging process, and all I can say is that, you know, in listening to the comments at the P&amp;Z Commission and at our meetings, you know, my own thoughts have evolved as we've gone through this process. I want to thank everyone for their comments. Okay. I want to thank everyone for their comments, that my thinking has evolved in hearing from you all. I wanted to start by summarizing some of my comments from our last meeting when we had the second reading. I described the citizen planning process that informed the development of the Northeast District Plan as a good example of what I referred to as a win-win strategy, that through a negotiated conversation among stakeholders, it generated planning principles and recommendations that were then fulfilled and depicted in illustrative form as the design option. Is it possible, Danielle, to show the district, the illustrative from the district plan and the first version that was presented at P&amp;Z?
I'm also going to ask our communications department to turn up Counselor Thomas Mike, please.
Okay. Thanks, yeah. Sure. So I did want to try to focus on the western portion of this development, and focus on this concept of the buffer, which I think seems to be one of the key issues that we're trying to address. The drawing on the left is the illustrative plan from the Northeast District, and there are several key elements that are represented in that development of the western side of the property. And moving from north, which is at the top, where you have Scott Boulevard, the first element would be that double-loaded cul-de-sac off of Scott Boulevard, which terminates where the ridge comes in close proximity to the Hickory Hill Park boundary. It's still fairly, where the cul-de-sac ends is still a fairly significant distance from the park boundary itself, but it then just, it terminates where it comes closest to the park boundary. You then have a natural area, what I estimated it being approximately 450 feet wide, which join together the natural area of Hickory Hill Park with the natural area to the east. Unfortunately, we don't really see Hickory Hill in the image, so we don't have a clear sense of how the area on either side of this western side of the property is all-natural area. Then finally, to the south is a single-loaded, a single-loaded cul-de-sac, which bends in a northwesterly direction as it crosses the creek, terminating where it ends in close proximity to the park boundary again. So as we've talked about, this is the two cul-de-sac concept, but I would add that the other critical element is the break between the cul-de-sacs. This is a natural area which runs through where the proximity to the Hickory Hill is most sensitive, and how it acts as kind of a continuous element connecting Hickory Hill Park with the large natural area to the east. So I think the intent here, as I read it, was the desire to have a continuation of that natural area, not have it broken by development. As was noted earlier in the text, there's pretty clear reference to not having a through street. And I think we need to remember, this was developed by the city staff in consultation and in negotiation with the community and the stakeholders. The second, the initial and second proposal, so looking at the proposal on the right, differed from the Northeast Plan in two important ways. The cul-de-sacs and the continuous natural area concept were eliminated. In their place is a continuous, double-loaded street that ran from Scott Boulevard to the creek. Is this, oh, this is the third proposal, Danielle? Is that right? Okay. So there were earlier versions where the entire, basically the entire continuous road was double-loaded. This is showing the single-loaded concept, which was presented at the third reading and is what P&amp;Z approved and what we're being asked to approve now. That change to the single-load concept occurred over approximately 71% of the total length of that continuous road in the south and west sections, and was an attempt to address the interface with the park boundary. And the remaining 21% to the north remains double-loaded, and this was, as I said, approved by P&amp;Z in what's before us now. So the question in my mind was, you know, that the inconsistencies between these two concepts were pretty dramatic. Why wasn't the district plan cul-de-sac concept and the continuous area concept considered? You know, we saw right away, straight away at P&amp;Z, that no consideration was going to be given to the cul-de-sac concept. I would suggest that the first two Hickory Hill proposals, you know, insofar as they were not modeled after what was in the Northeast District Plan, that what they were modeled after was that recent development to the east, the Tamarack Ridge Development, which is also a ridg-top development of around 60 single-family lots on a continuous, double-loaded street from the existing Hickory Trail north to Scott Boulevard. This business model of ridg-top development maximizes the efficiency of the street infrastructure, providing access to the lots. The current Hickory Hill proposal, however, single-loads a high percentage of the Hickory Trail extension in an attempt to improve the park interface. This change to the business model significantly reduces the efficiency of the infrastructure. Over the long term, the property taxes generated by the development may not cover the city's financial obligations associated with the infrastructure maintenance. So this is, in my view, it's compromised the concept of Tamarack Ridge. I understand that the goal of it was to improve the interface, but in attempting to improve the interface, the issues related to the maintenance cost of the infrastructure and how that's going to be borne by a reduced property tax revenue is a concern to me. In addition, the public's need to protect Hickory Hill Park's view sheds from the current proposal would require dense, tall, evergreen screening along the property line. Thus, the Northeast District principle of creating public vistas with single-loaded streets adjacent to open spaces would be nullified. You know, one of the key goals of the single-loaded street concept was to create open, public vistas, but because of the adjacency to Hickory Hill Park, those vistas are going to be terminated by a dense, vegetated screen along the east side of the park. So that, too, is not consistent with the Northeast District Plan. So in summation, I would just simply say that the intent of the Northeast District Plan's principles, text, and Bluffwood illustrative plan are not achieved by the current proposal, and consequently, I will be voting no.
I also want to thank every member of the public who's reached out to us, both here tonight and over the last six months, those who've engaged with us at the city council level, those who've contacted us individually, those who've contacted planning staff, and those who've engaged with the Planning and Zoning Commission. I just want to lift up some of the things that I've heard, especially tonight and in our most recent emails, that Hickory Hill Park is an oasis, is it, it is a refuge, it is a gem, it is the people's park, nature is healing, and I agree 100% with every one of those sentiments. And I will also say that I agree with the fact that our city attorney works for us and that we don't have to follow his advice. I will say for myself that the threat of a lawsuit is not taken as bullying, but sometimes we have to consider the interests of a property owner and balance the law that is in front of us, what we have today, against what many, or even the vast majority of people may think is best or may be what they want. I, like councilormems, do not know if the city ever was offered the opportunity to purchase the park. I can say with confidence that the city should not and likely could not pursue condemnation or eminent domain to take over this park, and if we were able to do so, if we could meet the legal threshold to do so, it would be millions of dollars for us to acquire this land. And part of my job as an elected official representing every resident of Iowa City is to balance a cost like that, taking into account the preciousness of this park, taking into account the need to preserve the ecology, taking into account the watershed, and to balance that with, okay, if that protection costs what I think it could cost to acquire the property, and balance that against all of our other obligations for this community. Every other initiative that we have promised you all will be carried out to serve this community. And as a user of Hickory Hill Park, I don't believe the balance would come out in favor of purchasing that land. That would be my vote. That would be my decision, and I know that my colleagues and others here may not agree with me. I also took the opportunity to walk this area. On Friday evening, it was sunny, it was very hot. I took my dog, as I often do, to Hickory Hill, entered through the First Avenue entrance, followed the trail along, wasn't sure how to access this particular parcel, so just headed north when I could because I've looked at the map a million times, understood where it was. Found a trail that got thinner and thinner, avoided, you know, the thorny bushes and poison ivy, and popped out into a hay field, a moan field with trees around the edges. And I knew from looking at the map and looking at the GPS that I was now on the ACT property or the property that, I don't know if they're still the owners right now, but that was the property in question. I walked along the edge, along the wooded area, and tried to locate a trail that would get me back into the park on the western edge, and eventually I did. And again, not a big trail, not an obvious gravelled trail or anything like that, but certainly a well-worn trail to get back into the park. And there, after going through a pretty decent wood line, I came to the prairie, the beautiful wildflower prairie, the place where a recent person who emailed us said, "I like to sit at the picnic table on top of the hill and look out over the prairie," and I do too. And I can tell you, from that picnic table, you will not see this development because of the elevation... Because of the elevation, because of the trees that already exist, not with the additional buffer that hasn't been planted yet, I'm very confident that this will not impact the views from the park. I acknowledge that it will impact the park, but I don't think it will be anything like Hickory Heights to the north, which I agree should not have occurred that way. This project will expand the park, and I worry if we turn it down tonight, that once the litigation is complete, and honestly, there may be litigation however this vote comes out, but once all of that is done, what if it's different people sitting up here who have different ideas? What if it's different people at Planning and Zoning who would be fine with something like what happened with Hickory Heights? I see that as a risk that I'm not willing to take. So I will be supporting the third reading of the rezoning tonight.
We do have two on the phone.
Mayor, support us. Support us.
We do have two on the phone. Anyone wants to go?
Still connected? Did we lose them?
We're going to take a quick pause because we want to make sure that our councilors are still connected.
I'm still here, I'm
Great.
I have no idea if Mayor Protem is still there, although, because it's getting late where she is.
I just want to check in with Mayor Protem. Are you there?
Yes.
Great. You can go on, Councilor Weiner.
I'm carefully considering what I have heard on from all parties this evening, and I do not have a decision at this point.
Okay. All right. Mayor Protem, would you like to go?
Yes, you know, just by reading all the emails that I received, this is a lot of emails that we received from the people opposing this project, and also thank you for the people who come in person, even though it's still COVID, and I know a lot of people, they don't want to take that risk, but they came over here to do this. And given just the fact that always when people come and are opposing something, I remember also, you know, the park that we have, it, when MediaCom came to put the solar plant and a lot of people came, we opposed it. So I think I still, you know, as Councilor Thomas said, we can still do the, you know, cul-de-sac, and still we can do the buffer and North Row Street. I agree with all those. I agree with the residents 100%. So just to make it short, to cut it short, I am not going to support this project. I would vote no.
I do have a question about the current northeast district plan. Does staff know or anyone know how many single-family is kind of proposed or thought to be within that, within the district plan? No?
No, you don't get down to that level of detail in a plan like that.
Okay.
It's, again, the comp plan's not an engineered plan, it's more of just a vision, so you wouldn't have that level of detail.
The one thing I'll say is the passion that the community has brought has really, you know, again, I think it has brought all of council to this great appreciation, which I think all of us has mentioned. And you're not ignored. I want you to know, you weren't ignored with my first vote, you're not ignored with my second vote, and you won't be ignored with my third vote. You know, there's a few things that I want to talk about. The first one is the memory care. Now, there are people in our community, and we just gave a proclamation for the American Disabilities Act, Americans with Disabilities Act. Individuals that have disabilities or elderly people, and there's the Homestead Act, they have a right to live in the community, just like you and I, whether they are in a facility or they're in a private home. So when I hear those comments about, you know, they shouldn't be in that space, they can be any, in my opinion, and the Americans with Disability Act and Homestead Act, they really should be wherever they want to be, where there is living quarters. So that's one thing that I want to say, that the memory care part of this, I really do support. So with my day-to-day job, we have group homes in the community. And I can tell you, when we first started to buy group homes in the community, the opposition that we would get, with people calling the agency and saying, "We don't want those people living by us," because they saw a wheelchair or they saw an individual out there with a, that they assumed because of appearance had a notable disability. So the one thing that I will like to say is that I fully support the memory care and will in every living residential community within Iowa City. So that's one thing I'll say. I do respect everyone's position on that, but the memory care, I mean, we just gave a proclamation, so that I have a passion about. Now, when we talk about our climate action, councilors, I know that we have been, you know, talking about how our commitment is, and I don't, you know, tonight I don't want to put staff on the spot, because I don't really know much about the ecological impacts of, you know, kind of disturbing the, with disturbing and bringing in some concrete. Certainly, I do know that, you know, there are, the city would truly consider everything to ensure that there's not floods within a neighborhood, so that I do believe. And I think that the information brought today would actually cause us to look further into ensuring that nothing of that nature would take place. I asked about the cul-de-sac, and before I go there, you know, eminent domain and all that other stuff, I want to just agree with Councilor Burgess. I don't believe that that is where we want to go at this point, for various reasons. There was a memo in the packet, and because of time I'm going to spare going into that. We do know that there is 14 acres that will be gained by this, and the buffer, I've heard a lot about the buffer. I've heard a lot about, you know, ensuring that the sanctuary remains, and I have a great respect for that. So when I look at this, there's four things that I have to consider. It's the cul-de-sac, the through street, the memory care, which I just mentioned, the climate action, which I do believe that there will be some disturbance to the park, and the buffer. And I think there has been some considerable changes to ensure that there will be less disturbance to the experience that people have. So it gets down to kind of the through street, and when you look at the purpose of the northeast district plan, how, you know, people came together, and we just had a meeting in our work session, and a part of the issue with this is predictability. Predictability with the developers, predictability when they have a plan that they've talked about, where staff comes and authentically share what they have seen as being the value of this council and move, and some change in trends with through streets throughout our community. We have the predictability that when your councilors look at the plan that we're going, you know, that it's going to be a unanimous vote or understanding that that's what we should be following. Although I must state that a part of what we've seen is that our plans are outdated, and earlier today, we had this discussion about some of the changes that we may need to make. I believe it is because of conversations like this that it really is crucial that we make those changes. We do know that the northeast district, northeast comprehensive, no, not the comprehensive, district plan is up for discussion in the future, you know, for council to really look at. With the discussion earlier today and predictability, when it comes down to the people of this community, and when they look at something like this and say, "Council, this does not look like the right." Of course, I pause and say, "Absolutely, it doesn't." And then I look at, what is the, you know, why is this being changed? And I said in the first, in the first meeting, I can, and maybe the second one, I can go either with the cul-de-sac or through street. When I do, and I have walked the park, when I do think about this park, and it's unfortunate that we don't know how many single-family homes would be a part of this, when I do look at this park and look at the plan and the district overlay, I just believe, honestly, that it is not the time for this council to approve this project. And I will not, I will not be supporting it. I don't have anything particularly new or eloquent to say about this.
What I found most persuasive this evening, I mean, there's, there has been an enormous amount said about this, what I found most persuasive this evening were the two diagrams that Counselor Thomas asked be projected. I understand that there, that there are reasons to not allow cul-de-sacs. At the same time, I actually live on a cul-de-sac, which is from a previous, a previous iteration, but that also underscores what one of our commenters earlier this evening said, that we're making decisions for 100 years from now. The, I believe that we should go back and look at this from the point of view of two cul-de-sacs. I also want to support 100% what Mayor Teague said about memory care facility. There is nothing more healing than nature, including for people with Alzheimer's and memory care issues, and I can say that also from personal experience because of my father. We just had the 31st anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act that was championed by our own Senator Tom Harkin, and regardless of what happens tonight, I really hope that this senior living, assisted living memory care facility goes forward. But because I would like to see this reconfigured with cul-de-sacs, I will also vote no.
Any other comments from councilors? Roll call, please.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Weiner?
No.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
No.
Motion passes five to two. Can I get a?
No.
No.
I'm sorry.
Fail.
Motion fails. Five to two.
Two to five.
Two to five. We have to flip it. Two to five. Sorry. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'm going to give that to
Let's move by Taylor, second by Burgess.
Yeah. Move by Taylor, second by Burgess. You might have a little delay on your phone there, councillor, there, Mayor Protem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. And I do think there is a lag because they both just said aye later. All right. Item number 12 is solid waste fees. This is an ordinance amending Title III entitled "Finances, Taxation and Fees, Chapter Four, Schedule of Fests, Rates, Charges, Bonds, Fines and Penalties, Section Five, Solid Waste Disposal." I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, council. I'm Jen Jordan, I'm the Resource Management Superintendent for the city. I'll just give a quick overview of this. Currently, curbside customers, which are single-family homes up to fourplexes, pay $2 per month for yard waste and organics collection, which is a weekly year-round collection. This fee charges an additional $2 for additional carts, which are optional for residents. Right now, we have about 16,250, 300 customers. Currently, there's maybe 200 customers who are utilizing a second cart, but we do see that growing in the future, since we have, just as of July 1st, limited the option or the opportunity for folks to use their own 35-gallon container with the move to the fully automated trucks. That's the first portion of this for the amendment. The second portion removes the charge for wood chips at the landfill formally. We haven't been charging for wood chips at the landfill for a couple of years. The supply greatly, greatly outstripped the demand over the past few years, and it was really brought to a head with derecho, so we're just trying to keep those moving. So this is just formalizing that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions by councilors? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please come forth. Welcome.
This is the last one. Martha Norbeck. I would like to commend Jen Jordan and her staff for the tremendous movement they've made on construction waste management, well, all waste management. I'm always focused on construction, but anyway, on waste management in general, the dramatic increase in recycling, the diversion of the compostable materials is huge. I was at a meeting in Des Moines the other day, and I was like, "Well, what do you do with your waste from the greenhouse?" They're like, "Well, we could, sometimes we have to landfill it." And I was like, "What? Des Moines doesn't compost? What's wrong with you people? We've been composting for a long time, and it's such an amazing accomplishment." And her department, you've got a lot to be proud of, and I'm very, very pleased with all the progress that's been made in that arena. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? See, I know one, I'm going to close the public hearing. And could I get a motion for first consideration?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Mims, seconded by Weiner. And council discussion? Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes?
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 13 is transit maintenance facility bus changing stations. This is a resolution approving project manual and a state estimate of cost for the construction of the transit maintenance facility bus charging stations project, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing.
Good evening, mayor, council. Darian Nagel-Gam, Transportation Services Department. This agenda item before you tonight will begin the bidding process for the transit maintenance facility bus charging stations project. The project will include new electrical utility service and associated electrical distribution equipment at the transit maintenance facility for supplying power to electric bus charging equipment for the electric buses that are slated to arrive later this fall. If you recall, in 2020, the city of equipment at the Transit Maintenance Facility for supplying power to electric bus charging equipment for the electric buses that are slated to arrive later this fall. If you recall, in 2020, the City of Iowa City was very excited to be awarded over $3 million in federal grant funding to procure four electric buses and three dual 180-kilowatt chargers and the associated, associated infrastructure improvements required to charge the vehicles. Each charging station will be able to charge two buses at the same time, which leaves a little extra capacity in case we transition and bring more electric buses onboard. The Bus Charging Station Project will include coordination with Mid-American Energy to upgrade the electrical infrastructure to the facility, and it will also provide the equipment to support the installation of the equipment inside the facility that is required to charge the buses. The chargers and associated equipment can be moved to another location should a new transit facility be constructed. In terms of timeline, the bid lighting is scheduled for August 10th with the award date August 17th. We anticipate construction to begin late August and with the construction, final completion date of late October, October 29th, which would be just in time for our expected delivery of the four battery electric buses. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about this project.
Here and none. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Taylor?
Second. Thomas?
Council discussion.
I was pleased to see the statement that the chargers and associated equipment can be moved to another location should a new transit facility be constructed, because that was my concern. I thought, spend all this money for all this, and we're planning already for the new facility. So I was very excited to see that, and that's, that's great.
All right. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Zalee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 14, Orchard Street Reconstruction. Resolution approving project manual and a state of, an estimate of cost for the construction of the Orchard Street Reconstruction Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mari Van Dyke with the Engineering Division. I'll talk a little bit about the Orchard Street Reconstruction Project. So this project will involve reconstructing Orchard Street between Benton Street and Highway One. So here is a picture, if you're standing on Orchard Street facing south towards the highway. As you can see, the pavement is in pretty rough condition. And also, I don't know if you can kind of tell to the left, there's sidewalk that comes to a dead end. So another part of this project will to be, to add five-foot-wide sidewalk to the east side of Orchard Street. For utility improvements, we will be replacing the sanitary sewer north of Douglas Street between Benton and Douglas. And then between Douglas Street and Highway One, we'll be replacing storm sewer and water main. The schedule for the project is to open bids August 11th, award the contract August 17th, and then construction would be from this September to next June. The estimated construction cost is $1,220,000, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Here are no questions. Thank you. Great. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please come forth. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Thomas?
Second. Taylor?
Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Zalee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 15, TRC Preliminary Budget. Resolution approving the preliminary operational budget for the ad hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission that runs from July of 2021 through December of 2021. And I'm going to ask for the Chair of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission to come and give some comments. Welcome.
Thank you, Council. Would you like me to begin with the itemized version of the budget or just talk more about why I believe it should be passed?
I, I think, are you planning to do any presentation with a computer?
So these are all within our public documents. I can also send them to you right now.
No, you don't have to.
I'm pretty much just reading.
Yep. All right. That's fine. However you want to proceed, you can probably give your content as, and then council will have the items, the budget up if they have it.
Okay. I'll just begin by reading the line items. So Mohammed Tariori, by the way. Commissioner stipend, so we have that for 1,000 per commissioner per month. We also have a line item in there for the facilitator. So the total contract value for the facilitator is higher than the 30,000 included. However, no more than the 30,000 is expected to be paid out prior to new budget requests. Experts in training, we have 36,000 set aside for that as do feel that there is a need for experts to come in and advise us and also for training in things such as leadership and facilitating these community discussions. Next, advertising and outreach, 17,500 for payment for promotional material, supplies, and those that provide the labor to distribute them. These materials may include announcements for listening sessions, other public meetings, special meetings. Next, videographers, 17,500 documenting the truth-telling and reconciliation process, i.e. for those that do not feel comfortable presenting directly to the public. Recording, editing, production of testimony made by or to members of the TRC. Next, transportation for necessary participants. So have that at 2,500 for now. And that is for individuals whom wish to tell their truths at a public meeting but do not have the means to attend, putting aside funds to help cover the associated costs. Next, we do have two different line items stemming from, from the commissioner stipend as well. Both back pay from pre-TRC pause commissioners, so pay to them for, per meeting attended, 500 per meeting attended. That's six meetings in total, nine members of the commission. And then next, there's also back pay for post-TRC pause commissioners. So it's five meetings since the relaunch, 500 per meeting, per, and then that'd be five meetings, 2,500 in total, multiplied by nine to cover all nine members. And also includes an extra 500 for the first meeting back for former Commissioner Navari Jackson, who attended another meeting even though she has a lot to do, and I am very thankful for her as well, for everything that she went through on this commission. So knowing that a lot of the time commitment she had put in while working multiple jobs and having a family, just, yeah. I can say the same about a lot of the members of this commission in terms of the time they put forth for, for everything. But let me just get on to the subcommittee aspect. Subcommittee Operational Budget. So we have subcommittees for housing, policing, education, youth and youth, youth and youth engagement, healthcare and sustainability. So that came out to a total of 130,000 for all of those subcommittees combined. So each of those subcommittees has money set aside for researcher pay, collaborators and consultants, materials, and miscellaneous things such as if there's anything else needed for materials for someone that's needing to present, or transportation for any of those individuals. And additionally, if there's anything needed such as supplies for actually operating their meetings. So, and we also recommend that any funds in this budget that remain unspent should be repurposed for our future budget needs rather than immediately just looking to spend each and every dime of some of the things that aren't particularly put out. Next, I would like to just speak on how I feel about the budget and why I feel it's necessary and the way it was written. So thank you, Council, and the people of Iowa City. I'd like to begin with reading the charges of the ad hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission as stated upon its creation. The charges of the TRC are as follows. Fact finding. The TRC shall collect evidence, including firsthand testimony of discrimination and racial injustice in multiple settings, and compile a complete record of racial injustices that will inform and support the fundamental institutional and policy reforms necessary to address systemic racism. That's a lot. Next, truth telling. TRC shall provide multiple fora and creative opportunities for persons impacted and traumatized by racial injustice to share their stories of racial injustice and experience to be heard by (a) fellow community members of color, (b) a broad cross-section of the entire Iowa City community, and (c) key decision-makers in city government, the business community, and the university; (2) explore ways to provide such opportunities through art, music, theater, workshops, rallies, and other forms of the congregation, multimedia, and listening designed to reveal truths that cannot be fully expressed in traditional fora; and (3) create a repository for community stories expressed in multimedia, written, video, audio, art that can be catalogued and used to educate and inform members of the community. (4) The reconciliation. The TRC shall provide opportunity for and facilitate direct conversation among and between community members of color, white community members, and representatives of various sectors in which people of color experience discrimination and injustice. For example, police and protesters, landlords and tenants, students and teachers, patients and healthcare providers, business owners and staff. (5) Create a replicable model that provides a structure for enabling these conversations throughout the city. (6) Make available opportunities for a broad cross-section of the community to learn about discrimination and racial injustice in our community. And (7) identify and recommend to the city council institutional and policy reforms, new social practices, expectations, protocols, habits, rituals, conversations, and celebrations that will move Iowa City toward a shared experience of race indifference, justice, and equity, and community, and harmony. Now, for our mission and purpose statements that we created. Who are we? Our commission represents a collection of citizen activists from diverse backgrounds calling on Iowa City community to account for their history of racial, racialized oppression. We are individuals who are committed to structural change, truth-telling, healing, trauma, and repair. We share in common a vision for an equitable and sustainable community free of violence and systemic racism. We believe the time has come to foster change. Our mission. The Iowa City Ad hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission is committed to implementing and sustaining grassroots, community-centered, truth-telling processes to address past and present instances of both direct and indirect actions of violence, discrimination, and racism in Iowa City. We will collect testimony from a variety of institutions, including but not limited to schools, housing providers, government officials, healthcare, banking institutions, and law enforcement. Now, in 2018, the City of Iowa City City Council voted to give itself a pay increase, citing this line of reasoning. Most of the council voted in favor of the raise, saying it makes serving on council economically viable for people that would otherwise need to work a job. The vote on, came on the heels of discussion on the topic at its October 2, 2018 work session. Council members and mayor salaries will be increased to $11,960 and $14,950 respectively. Service. Economically viable. Interesting choice of words. The City of Iowa City Ad hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission is a body of bipartisan individuals from various walks of life. One thing we all have in common is our devotion to properly representing the needs of the people and ensuring these needs are met and acted upon. This is difficult work and work that is needed due to failures of past legislatures within the City of Iowa City and derived from past failures of Johnson County, the State of Iowa, and the United States as a whole. Three weeks ago, I watched the city council voted to provide almost $150,000 to a consulting firm for just a comprehensive plan on the future of recreation programs and facilities in Iowa City. Compare this to the charges of the TRC, as written and passed by the City of Iowa City City Council. The charges for this commission are broad, and the nature of the work requires new processes and frameworks to be created in real time. Many things that the city council deliberates on, such as a plan to restructure the police department, which is actively being considered by council, will be a factor in our final recommendations at the close of this commission. If we are going to be researching, discussing, discussing, and ultimately consulting on policies that the city has implemented in both the past and the present while undergoing the trauma of the truth-telling and reconciliation process, then we deserve a stipend for our work. We believe the labor, expertise, patience, and care we will provide while serving the people of Iowa City is paramount to the future success of our great city. We are not a body of individuals to be treated as we are on the sidelines, uncommitted or selfish. We too are active in this community apart from our dedication to this commission. I've heard from supporters. Additionally, I have heard from detractors. To the detractors and to council, respectfully, speaking for myself, I would like for you to ponder and then look to truthfully weigh in on these questions. One, how many meetings have you attended in real time? Two, if the answer to the previous question is one or less, why? Three, how many meetings after the pause have you attended in real time? Four, have you tried to provide any meaningful guidance or expertise to assist the commission in its mission? Five, if you believe the answer to the previous question is yes, how did you offer it, and did you offer it in good faith or out of anger and animosity? Six, do you believe that we should continue on doing these things exactly as we have in the past just because that is how it has always been? Seven, if the answer to the previous question is yes, then I now ask you this. Do you believe in true progress or do you believe in stagnation? Before I continue, remember this. I ask that you think about these things before you reply. As a wise man once said, "Listen to understand before you listen to reply." Stagnation stems from an unwillingness to divert from the norms. The norms of the past are a large part of why we are even in this position today. Progress is something that I believe in. Faith in a better tomorrow is something that I will continue to hold dear. Love for my community is something that I hang on to. I believe my fellow commissioners hold many, if not all, of these very same ideals. I ask you to think of this as an investment. This community was set up to work on a tight timeline as it stands, unlike other commissions. These constraints have been tightened further due to circum, due to circumstances surrounding the pause. While council put the TRC on pause, I did not pause. I attended meetings held by other organizations, public meetings held by other government bodies, read voraciously, sought advice, and worked hard on our preliminary budget. I know that Vice Chair Mel Ali, Commissioner Rivera, and Commissioner Harris did not give up on their efforts too. A special thank you to those that reached out to us during that time, as we truly appreciate the time and guidance provided. Jesse Case, the facilitator, whose contract proposal was unanimously approved by the council in March of this year, stated in one of our pre-pause public meetings that he believes we should receive compensation for our work. The thought had not even occurred to me until then. As time continued, the work and preparation intensified, and I began hearing more about the daily responsibilities of my fellow commissioners. I found myself feeling the stipend is not just something to consider, but something to push for inclusion in our budget. We are asked to volunteer our time to put ourselves through continued trauma, and in many cases, re-traumatization based on our own past experiences. Those of you that witnessed the listening session from the Excluded Workers Coalition know that this process will not be easy. As we hear more cases, the weight we bear will only intensify. We are asked to volunteer our time to harm our mental states, miss quality time with our families, and more. Why do this for free? Have our detractors considered the possibility that little, if any, of our final recommendations may even be implemented? Well, we have created these processes, documented these traumas, and looked to facilitate healing while putting ourselves through so much pain and adversity to only hear no, but thank you. I stand here and ask myself, would that potential outcome be due to the lack of support from those that fail to contribute to something bigger than themselves due to small interpersonal agreements? Or would he fail for other reasons? I truly cannot say. Only time will tell. What I can say is this: We are determined to succeed. We will succeed. Speaking again for myself, I have no interest in the accolades or the fanfare. TRC or not, I will continue pushing for change and a better future for those here now and those that come after me. Again, our motivation is true progress, progress and healing, not money or power. I, along with my fellow commissioners, just believe that good, honest, hard work should not be performed for free, especially by members of the very marginalized communities that this commission was constructed to benefit. The past year has been filled with, "We see you, we hear you, we stand with you." I'm no longer interested in you telling me these things. Show me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any questions by council?
Mr. Mayor, I'm actually, we may have missed, did we have a motion and second to approve the resolution? I may have missed it.
Why don't we go ahead and get a motion?
Yeah, now would be fine.
All right.
So moved. Mims?
Second. Burgess?
All right. Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for the Chair from council? I don't hear any. Thank you.
None.
Yep. All right. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please sign your name on the side table and then, and you can start first since you're the first one. At the end, sign your name and, and give your address.
Hello, City Council, members of the public, and the Committee of Truth and Reconciliation. My name is Riley Wells, and I am here today to give public comment on the request by the Tru- the Truth and Reconciliation Council for approval on a budget of $337,000 for the fiscal year 2021. Within the $104,000 of stipends that the commission is asking for, each board member is to be paid $1,000 a month, or $500 for each meeting for their bimonthly meetings. None of the meetings of the Truth and Reconciliation Committee that I have observed have gone longer than three hours, meaning the council is effectively asking for over $150 for each hour that they are in a committee meeting, excluding Not only is the committee asking for a pay rate almost double that of the United States President, but the entire budget for the mayor, councils, and city manager of Iowa is 1.465 million divided roughly between 24 committees and councils. This means the Truth and Reconciliation Committee is asking for roughly 23% of the entire budget allocated to this sector, despite being one of 24 committees pulling from that funding. Furthermore, I just have a couple more questions. What advertising needs to be done for a committee, and how does advertising impact the effectiveness of a committee? What experts or training are needed to help the committee function? And what constitutes board operations, and where specifically will that $130,000 be spent? I would like to say thank you for addressing some of my questions that I had already. And I want to say that I hope some of my questions find their way into the discussion after this, as I believe they are imperative to understanding why this money is needed and what it will go towards. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for sharing. And we'll have you write your name on the, you already did that already, great. Welcome.
Orville Townsend, 713 Whiting Avenue. Concerning this topic, I guess I'll start off just by sharing that, in my opinion, when we talk about volunteering for committees, we're talking about a choice. And if you want to be compensated for being on a committee, then before you, you know, get started, you should basically get information as to whether or not you're going to be paid. If you ask the question, and the answer is that there's no compensation, then you have a choice. You can participate as a citizen, an interested person, to improve a situation, or you can choose not to. Earlier, I heard someone mention that in terms of city funding, that financial responsibility was very important. And I guess I'd be very disappointed if you chose to pay somebody to do something that everybody could do for free. Now, I'll be very honest with you. I've been in Iowa City a long time. This is my city. And I've been on committees, commissions, you name it, I've been on it because I want to help to make this a better place. I've never thought of being compensated, and I tell you, I've spent a lot of time, school board, you name it, I've done it. So if you do choose to pay individuals to participate on committees that people will do for free, then number one, I'm on several committees right now. I'd like to be compensated, too. Plus the fact, I'd like us to go back about at least five years and give me back pay. You know, I mean, it doesn't make any sense. We've had committees, we've had people doing commissions for free, and all of a sudden, somebody wants to be paid for it. You talk about, you know, you kind of mentioned that what's happening with the city council, or city council in a way, or elected officials, which makes you, in a way, employees of the city. And you have a high level of accountability. But I'm just saying, you know, if you want to pay someone to do something that's been done for free because people want to do the right thing and improve this city, then I don't see that as being financially responsible.
Thank you. Welcome.
All right. I'm here in support of Chairman. Sorry, I, my bad. Anyways, and the last speaker had a point that maybe you should pay people, other people, committees to do stuff, so I mean, I don't think that's a reason to not pay for this. And this, the new, the TRC is noticeably different, in different roles, different purpose and all that than the other committees, too. So there are some distinctions there. But no, just in support of funding the committee so you can actually try to do something here. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Billy Townsend, I'm 713 Whiting Avenue. I've been in Iowa City now for about 30 years, on several commissions. And the reason I joined commissions is because the things that they do and the projects that they support are things that I have a concern about. Human Rights Commission was my first job, and at that time, we took all of the complaints and we reviewed them, and we made recommendations to, well, at that time, the young lady that was the head, we gave her our recommendations on what we thought should happen, and we, of course, spent time sitting with the people who made the complaints. So we spent a lot of time. And I'm on Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm sure you've heard plenty about that tonight. We have had meetings that have gone four or five hours. A lot of that because of Hickory Hill. But I have never once thought that because I wanted to be a part of something bigger than myself, that I should be paid for it. I've had jobs, I mean, I've got, I've spent a lot of time at the university, 30 years. That was my job. But commissions, to me, is something that you plan to do because you have a passion for it. And of course, as my husband said, if you're going to pay them, pay me. I won't back pay for Human Rights Commission and Planning and Zoning if we're just giving out paychecks. But that's not what I'm, to me, that's not what it's about. It's about having a concern about what's going on in your community and trying to make it better. Thank you.
You can sign that when you're done speaking. Yes. And state your name and your address, please.
All right. So my name is Daphne Daniel, and I currently reside at 1121 Carver Street. I am one of the commissioners on the TRC, and I want to address some of the concerns I've heard here tonight. First and foremost, the TRC is not any other commission. No offense to the Human Rights Commission, Parking and Zoning, we're not the same. We have a deadline, unlike those commissioners, which means we need to fit decades' worth of really traumatic experiences, listening to these experiences over and over again. We need to do all of that within a year or two. While other commissioners or other commissions can take breaks, they have ongoing projects, they really don't have a sunset date. We do. I've heard a number of people say, well, you're paying people to do, you'd be paying someone to do something for free, or something that other people would do for free. I wholeheartedly disagree that you would do it for free, once you understood the magnitude of what city council has rightfully asked us to do. I joined the TRC because I believe in the work. I believe in reconciliation. I'm an attorney by trade, so reconciliation generally means I get less money, right? But in a community where we really are looking to one another, to be our neighbors, to be our teachers, our postal workers, our firefighters, our police officers, if we don't reconcile, this raw scar, or this raw wound in Iowa City will never heal. And that's the work that we've been tasked to do, help this community heal. And if the city council, if the community will not support us because, well, I didn't get paid for my work, I mean, like, we're not getting paid, we're asking for stipends. But if the city won't support us, and the community won't support us, then I don't really see reconciliation being a realistic goal, or goal. And so I think tonight, I'm seeing a lot, like, I think tonight the decision will tell us a lot about how the city values us as a commission, and how the community values the possibility of reconciliation and progress. Thank you.
So my name is Eric Harris. I'm also on the TRC. My address is 1107 Sandusky Drive. I would just start off by saying that I want to clear up some things that I heard from previous people, and I just want to know, everybody to be, like, just know the truths of things. Number one, I've been on a Zoom meeting for a TRC call for about four and a half hours at some points. And I think when I was on it for four and a half hours, I was hospitalized with an illness. That's one thing that I want to clear up. Another thing that I want to clear up is I heard the statement that, you can get anybody to get on these commissions and do it, you don't have to pay them any money. Well, the people that's on our commission are specialized in what we do. You know, some of us have been through our own traumas. Some of us have stories that we can tell that you just can't throw anybody on this commission and expect them to understand these stories or be able to tell these stories. Because I have my own truths that when we get started, like, saying our truths, I'm going to say my truth to make other people more comfortable to come out with their truths. And as far as us doing work and the work that we do outside of just the meetings, it is enormous. I mean, I can get to the point that how do we know that this work is being done? Well, almost a lot of the work that you see that happens around, whether it's the Excluded Workers Fund, or working with Iowa Cacti Worker, one of our names comes up in it. That's work that we do outside of the regular work, and try to get these people to tell truths, and things like that. So I just want to get that all clarified. And just on a personal note, I'm on this commission, I do a couple other things that I do. I work with Inside Out, I work with the South District Neighborhood Association, but also I have a regular job. And I have six children, with the youngest being six. So I've had meetings where I couldn't feed my children because I stayed on these meetings for so long, so I would shut out $50, $60, $70 to get some pieces for them, and that's what I had to do every time we had a meeting. Or I was going to be on a meeting for three or four hours, get off, get the meeting done, go upstairs, my house is in chaos. I got to go solve 15 different problems after that. And just the time that I put in, and the offline conversation that I had to have, usually after a meeting, it can last four hours, and I've had a two-hour conversation after that, just about our goals and what we want to accomplish, and how to get stuff done. And I understand that the precedent is not that these commissions got paid in the past, but like, you know, other people mentioned, this is an unprecedented time that we're living in, and we need to heal these wounds, and we're still basically dealing with a pandemic. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? There is a sign-in sheet. And Eric, did you sign the sign-in sheet earlier today? No, did you already sign it? Great. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for serving as volunteers for the council. Thank you for salaries that may be below what you could earn in the private sector to the staff. My name is Bennett Brown, 510 Ronald Street. I brought with me 10 copies here that I'd like to give you of a graph from a report produced annually that shows one dot for every police officer. On average, those cost the city something like $60,000 per officer, plus all the ancillary expenses. We spend $11 million on the police force, and that graph shows, it's in, I'm sorry, I should refer, this is the Barnes Traffic Report summarizing 2018 traffic data, and it shows that the vast majority of Iowa City Police pull over drivers who have dark skin at two and a half times the rate you'd expect out of all the drivers in the zones that they patrol. We've produced, as a city contracted, someone from St. Ambrose to produce that report annually, and it concerns me that we continue to pay $11 million to city employees to continue to implement the same policies that cause black drivers, black perceived drivers, so-called, I mean, the human race does not have races from the perspective of a biologist, but discrimination necessitates that we refer to it like that. We pull over black drivers at two and a half times a rate, and we pay people quite a bit to do that. I think, I'm not weighing in on whether we should pay the commission, but if we're not going to pay the commission, you got to ask, why are we paying 80 people $60,000 a year to go and continue doing the same thing that they've been doing year after year, in spite of the fact that we spend $1 million to an outside expert to produce this report every year, saying, sure enough, all but six cops pull over drivers more frequently when they're black? You might say, well, maybe that's because of the drivers, they don't fix their cars as much. Maybe some bone of racism in your body wants to say it's something other than racism. But in fact, once stopped, a black driver in this town is two and a half times more likely to get searched. And yet, only 40% is likely to have any evidence found. Now, I'm a middle school math teacher, was at Southeast for the last five years. I'll point out to you that 1 divided by 2.5 is 40%. That's evidence that there's actually not a driver difference, there's a difference in how police enforce the law. Nationally, it's found city after city. The police nationally pull over black drivers at two and a half times the rate that they pull over white drivers, and the effect disappears in the 30 minutes surrounding sunset because it's hard to perceive the color of somebody's skin in the 30 minutes around sunset. This is the most important task that this council has in your term, in my opinion. Don't get it wrong. I appreciate your service very much, and I appreciate the service even of staff who get paid to do their job. I know you also get paid a meager sum. It's not enough. I hope that you see to it that this task is done correctly.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? If so, please come forth. And if you've already been up, you can't come, if you've already been up, you can't come back.
Grabbing my mask.
Okay. Yep. No, that's why. No, I understand. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah.
All right. Welcome.
Hi. I'm going to read something really fast. I'm going to read fast, I'm going to talk fast, but I need y'all to hear me out because I have something to say. The last time I came before you guys, I got cut off. This time, I'm going to say what I got to say. So no disrespect to none of you.
We do have three minutes.
But today, I understand what you're saying, but I'm going to say what I got to say. So what is a truth commission? A truth commission is a temporary government-sponsored body that investigates political violence, the affected communities, and the individuals and institution responsible. Commissions receive testimony from hundreds, if not thousands, of witnesses. They gather and analyze documents and visit sites of violence. Commissions conclude their work with the report detailing their findings and recommendations. Recommendations by previous commissions include changes to police and military institutions, victim compensation, and memorials and museums. What commissions offer that other transitional justice tools don't is a forum to hear directly from affected communities and educate the broader public. Commissions afford victims and their families the opportunity to paint a fuller picture. I am Roy San Porter, Johnson County Vice Chair. I have been in this community, living here for 30 years. I have volunteered for 20. I served on the PCRB at the time, Police Citizen Review Board, which has now been changed to the Citizens Police Review Board. I served for five years. I didn't get a penny. Anything that I have volunteered for, any commission that I have been appointed to, and other people in our community, they did it because they had a love and compassion to change what was going on in our city. No one, no board, no commission committee in Johnson County has ever been paid, nobody but one, and that is the veterans. And that's from the federal state where they receive $50. For somebody to come up here and sit and tell y'all they want $500 a meeting? Come on. I have talked to each and every one of y'all, I've had a conversation with y'all. Y'all are elected officials. Take back your council. Where's your power? You let people come in here and tell you what they want, and y'all sit and think that that's what you have to do because you think that people's going to look at us as an almost all-white board, and they're going to call us racist. No, what you're doing is wrong. Call it as though it is. No commission gets paid. And like Orville said, if we're going to go back, I want to, I can retire. All the work that I didn't put in this community, I have went above and beyond. And in January, I will be the Chair of Johnson County. I have put in the work. And for somebody to say $500 a meeting, making more than y'all, and y'all are the people who have to make the decisions, you are elected officials. Take your roles back.
Thank you, thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? And you've already had your opportunity. Welcome. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Cliff Johnson. I live at 1710 Flatiron Avenue. I just wanted to say I wholeheartedly support my fellow commissioners. I joined in a little bit later when it came, oh, I'm also on the TRC myself. I joined in a little bit later after things kind of fell apart for a second from what I learned. I was keeping up with things and I really appreciated our president and our other fellow commissioners who were still sticking by and trying to push through because I feel like truth and reconciliation is a very important thing that is a little bit different than, I don't want to, I don't want to put things on a scale because I just feel like it needs to be understood that there are people who are giving up a lot of time and effort that they don't have to. And I do understand that other commissions have existed before and they might not have gotten paid, but maybe they should have. I feel as though, I don't believe in, well, just because I had it hard, I'm going to make sure that everybody else might feel that way. I don't feel like that's productive. I would hope that we can move forward and kind of just make sure that not only are we taking care of the people, but we're taking care of the people who are looking out for taking care of the people. I just feel like that's important. And maybe in the future, we should start looking into compensating and taking care of commissions. I just, I think that's important. Whenever you have someone that's willing to step up. I personally didn't expect to be paid at all and didn't, I still don't, it doesn't bother me at all either way. However, I do appreciate my fellow commissioners who are already on and going through a lot. And I just, I feel like compensation for that wouldn't be a bad thing. And I understand that other, other people have gone through things before and they, they feel they may deserve compensation as well. And I wish that would have been brought up for them as well at the same time. But I want us to move forward in the best way possible. And I feel like this is one way that can be very helpful. Other than that, I really hope that if, if there are other groups that we can join with and kind of bring, bring, bring out the best in all of us, I hope that we can push that forward a little bit more. And that's, that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion?
I'll start. One of the responsibilities of the city council is, of course, to appoint members to the many boards and commissions. For years, many years, the city has had a long history of applicants from the community who have been willing to volunteer to serve on those boards and commissions. They applied because they felt it was a way that they could be a part of making decisions that affect our community and saw it as their voluntary civic duty. Late last summer, it was requested that council establish a truth and reconciliation commission, which was to serve to bear witness to the truth of racial injustice in Iowa City and to carry out restorative justice in order to affect change on the local level. In good faith, we as council members unanimously proposed the new commission, referred to as the TRC, and appointed members to serve. It was disappointing that after only a short time, a hostile environment was created in the meetings. The meetings were not effective or productive. Some very good members were treated with total disrespect by their fellow commission members, and they resigned. New members were appointed to the commission, and I was hoping to see some progress towards the original mission with some frank discussions and open, honest dialogue. The commission was charged with creating a budget that would help them fulfill this mission. I appreciate the effort that was taken towards doing that. And there are key elements of the operational budget that do seem reasonable. However, providing payment for service on the commission does not make any sense to me. And quite frankly, I was astonished that they would ask for payment for their service. Other city commission members voluntarily give a lot of their time towards doing the work of their respective commissions. So this would not be consistent with the standard practice. But although I'm not in favor of payment for their service, I would be open to further discussions with this group about the budget in general for the TRC.
I'll jump right in there. So thanks to the TRC members that are here tonight. And then we do have one past TRC member. I don't know if I, is any other TRC members that are here? I certainly can respect the budget that's before us and, and, you know, go through and look at the ask. There's a few things in this budget that I certainly have questions about. And I do believe that it, you know, I, I just need to have more, make this, have a greater understanding. There's a few things that are overlapping in this budget in my mind, but maybe there's something that I'm missing. For instance, we have, I believe it's transportation twice for participants. And so it just wasn't clear to me unless there is a top version and a, no, there's a subcommittee budget outline as well that we have here. And then when we talk about, you know, the facilitator and then there's also an item in here for researcher pay. And, you know, there's, again, what I kind of recall from the original facilitator contract that, that one, the TRC had approved eight to one. And then it came to council. This council did approve it unanimous. But within that, what I, what I remember was a part of the research and coordination was within that. The, the other thing, you know, with this budget that I know that this council addressed before we actually presented or approved the truth and reconciliation, and that is in regards to the repository of the media. So there was great repository of community stories expressed in multi, multiple media. There was a great discussion on this that this council engaged in and because there was a request for either $25,000 to $30,000 to be included in the wording, into the, into the language of the truth and reconciliation resolution. And it was said at that time by this council that any of the media would come through, you know, our city operations, but if there was a special encounter or need that the commission had where someone wanted to go private to tell their story and that type of stuff, that this council would certainly entertain that. So, you know, so the, and I understand some of the commissioners probably weren't a part of that conversation, but that was, you know, and that line item is here for, is 17-5 for advertising and outreach, and then there's the videography for 17-5. And so, you know, that's over the $30,000 that was asked previous. So there's a few things within this budget that I have great concerns about or questions about. And then when it does come down to the compensation, I certainly do hear the stories that people have presented, the TRC individuals themselves. I hear some of the challenges that is faced when you are serving. I, I know the feeling of going to the grocery store and someone recognizing that you are on a board or a commission that has a very important mission that they want to talk about. And you find yourself there for twenty, thirty minutes talking about something where you have other obligations to get to and then other opportunities where you go and you learn that the work of, you're engaged in conversation. So I do understand that. What I will say is there are truth and reconciliation commissions certainly paid in various parts of the world. So I do acknowledge that there are some TRCs that do get payment. And, and where we are within our community, I think, personally, I think that we really need to have a greater discussion with the TRC in really solidifying what movement can, can, can you all get? Because what I don't want is this opportunity that we have before us to get stale, to not be achieved. Our community needs some reconciliation. When, when this came up, we talked about, what are some of the things that the TRC can do? Those stories are important to hear so that we can gather information as to what we need to do as a committee. We want those stories to impact policy. We want them to impact how we operate within our housing department because affordable housing is something that is, you know, hugely needed. We want to make sure that everybody in our community have access to live throughout our community and not in these little bubbles where we have only this section where it's affordable. And so I do understand the, the need, you know, that we had in the beginning for this commission. The compensation and the hours, what I would tell you is the makeup of the commission really needs to be probably looked at a little bit and revised as to, and we don't, you don't have the consultant. So maybe that is the first step, is that you get the consultant in. And then maybe some of these tasks and some of the things that you all are doing, you'll be able to figure out. You know, the one thing that I do believe is that there are some, that you all are passionate about the work of this reconciliation commission. So I don't want any of my comments to diminish your work or your passion. And I, I totally understand financial challenges that people have in their real, real life. And when you're offering your all and you still offer more, but I do not support the compensation. And I think, and I've thought about it. I literally wanted to get input from people just to see what their thoughts are. And it, you know, some of it relates to other boards and commissions, which I have to tell you that the CPRB, they deal with a lot of, some of the, you know, the racial injustice and stuff like that. There's other, in the, in our HRCs, they deal with a lot of racial injustice claims that come before them. And so, and they're really doing a lot of work to, to impact change. I do also hear, you know, that for some individuals, this may not be feasible for them to continue. What I will say is, my thought is that this commission work can really be more community. The commissions are the ones that kind of have the discussions and, and potentially will rally up the troops to do some of the work. So all this work does not need to fall on your hand. There's eighty-plus thousand people in this community. And the BIPOC community, we want change. And there's people out there that will go and do whatever's needed to get some of the work of the commission accomplished. And so I, that part of the budget, I will not support. I do think that there is other things within the budget that I need discussion about before I can support it.
I'll jump in. When this idea of a stipend for the commissioners first came up, I was very against it. My reaction was they knew what they were signing up for, which was an unpaid position. You know, we don't do this with other city commissions and we were pretty thoughtful in this being a city commission. And, you know, we, we haven't ever paid commissioners. So why, why would we do it now? My mind changed after watching hours of deliberation among the nine commissioners on this topic. They have been incredibly careful and thoughtful and graceful and understanding. Several of them started off not understanding why this might be something that would be necessary for them to carry out their work. And I just, it's hard, it's hard to summarize all of that and to convey why that I think this is so critically important. But one of the comments that I heard during one of those meetings that was really impactful to me is that we, we commissioners, we counselors tasked this commission, as, as Counselor Taylor said unanimously, to carry out this work. And if this commission, if these members who are very passionate and very committed, if we don't compensate them, who is going to do this particular work? And I don't see, it's, it's just, it's so transformational and it's so substantively different as far as an approach for our city government to take and what we're asking of community members that I think it's really critical that we acknowledge that, that we understand that this is different than other commissions that we've stood up or that have even, you know, a permanent purpose in our, in our city government. So I do support the stipend. And I, I've heard from a number of people who've had questions about it or concerns about it. And I would say those tend to fall into two categories, some of which, you know, we've, we've heard tonight as well. And, and that is, you know, we, we really don't do it for anyone else. And the fact that there are individuals, including those who've spoken to us tonight, who have done incredible work for decades in our community for free. And I think the fact that that has happened should not be a reason to not compensate those who are continuing to do it now. And I think we should consider deeply the fact that if, if civic engagement requires that you be able to show up and do this work for free for all of, all of our commissions, and it requires that you be available at the time, in the place, you know, we know we're not getting representative commissions. We know that. We know there are people who have hurdles that they cannot, that they cannot participate. And I think we need to think very critically about that and what that means for the commissions that support the work of the city council and of our government as a whole. And so for, for those who've been doing the work uncompensated, thank you. I think you should be paid. And I hope that this commission and their recommendation to council in acknowledging that for those commissioners who served previously and who now no longer serve, I think that's a really important component of their request from, from the TRC in their budget because I think that's, that's really necessary to acknowledge the, just how tough this work was, how tough that commitment is and that we value it and it's deserving of compensation.
And we do have people on the phone, I want to remind us. So if you all want to chime in, just feel free.
Well, I'll fill the void here, the silence, and make a few comments. You know, on the issue of the compensation, you know, when I first heard about it, I thought, well, that's interesting. You know, that's certainly not something that I'm aware we offer to those who serve on our commissions and committees. But I did, as I often do, began to look at specific to truth and reconciliation commissions. How are they treated? Are they treated any differently? And what I found was where you have TRCs, the commissioners are typically compensated. So that seemed to suggest that there is something perhaps unique about a TRC. You know, the nature of the work is difficult. There's just a great deal that a commissioner bears in serving on a TRC. So that certainly made me feel a little bit more open to the idea of compensation. But I also felt that what is perhaps one of the root issues here? Why are commissioners asking for this compensation? And I think what I would suggest is at least contributing to the situation is that it's not functioning as a typical commission. Most typical commissions have access to support staff who do the work. You know, the bulk of the work is done by paid staff. The TRC here does not have that support. And I suspect those of you who volunteered to serve on this commission didn't quite understand the fact that there wouldn't be that support staff. And so not only are you serving in the conventional sense of attending the meetings, setting agendas and so forth, representing the commission and the public, you're doing the work. That is unprecedented as well in terms of the way our commissions are functioning. So, and that to me is my primary concern, is that without having that support staff, this is a very, very difficult assignment. It's, you're working on stressful material. It's, there aren't many TRCs, there aren't many precedents on which to build your program, so to speak. It's a very difficult road. I felt that the facilitator in that regard was a really important position for the commission as the only really support that you have as a commission. And you have yet to have that support person because once Jesse resigned, it wasn't filled. So to me, that has made your job extremely difficult. I would say for me, the first priority moving forward is filling that position. I even want to say it should be reclassified as perhaps a programmer, project manager because there are a lot of issues in my mind with just managing this project that, as you noted, has an end date. This is not, in that sense, it's different as well. Most commissions are just ongoing. Yours has an end date, so it's a project in my mind in that regard. It has a point by which you need to complete your work. You need to come up with a schedule of how that work is going to be conducted and completed and work from that schedule, from that work plan and establishing your budget. I don't see, in my, the work that I did, I could not imagine, which was project-driven, I wouldn't be able to estimate the cost of doing it without having the work plan in place first. You know, I find this budget in that regard a little bit abstract. You know, when are these expenses being paid? How does it fit into the whole, you know, the entire picture? That's the kind of work that I think a project manager would help you with is how to give structure in time to the work that you're being asked to do. So in principle, I feel, given all the circumstances you're working under, the idea of compensation makes sense. I could envision your need for that compensation perhaps diminishing once you had more support in that traditional sense. But I think your request for compensation is really being driven by the fact that you're in this unusual situation of serving on the commission and then doing the support work that is normally handed over to staff. And until that situation is addressed and improved and you have that support structure, you are going to be overworked, you know, relative to other commissioners, in my view. So I think I'll just leave it at that. But I do think the budget needs more work in terms of attaching it to a work plan. It really needs to be clarified and structured in my mind in that way.
I do have one question for you. And not to be disrespectful to the TRC, but the charges of the TRC is fact-finding, including firsthand testimony and some more stuff, truth-telling, and get to the reconciliation. I'm not exactly sure if any of those charges have been done to date. So some of the meetings have been, I think, the structural piece that you're talking about.
Right.
And where they're missing, kind of that facilitator, that project manager. And I know the stress of having those budget conversations is stressful. And I think you might be correct that once they have that support staff, that, you know, and that plan in place, a lot of this stuff, at least that stress of just, I think it's a lot of mental stress, definitely, of trying to do the work of what the council has set them out to do. But I feel like there's just been some roadblocks as to what is the avenue. And I agree that that project manager, that facilitator, might be step one and then a budget kind of come after that. Although there are some things in the budget when it comes down to transportation and supporting of daycare and that type of stuff that I certainly would entertain and look at what the request is there.
I would really appreciate the opportunity to sit down and meet with the TRC about this. I'm not sure that having this discussion for the first time in this public forum is really the ideal way to go about this. I mean, obviously, it will all be public meeting. Traditionally, the facilitator is, in my view, a really key person. I know an RFP went out for it. Other TRCs, according to the people I've talked to, the research I've done, actually do have researchers helping and working with them too. So I have no issues with that line item. Basically, I think an enormous amount of extra work is and incredibly hard work is being done because, in part, because there is no facilitator. For nearly, you know, probably for nine months, it's been clear that it's key to have a facilitator. So to me, that's step number one. But I would really like to defer this and have a direct conversation in a work session and also find out what the status is of the RFP for a facilitator. And in addition, I would like to thank Stephanie Bowers, the staff person who has been giving nearly all her time to the TRC and who has other responsibilities as well, just so that it's clear that there is, that the need for support is great and there has been support to a great deal of support from Stephanie.
Any other comments? Mayor Pro Tim, are you still on? Mayor Pro Tim, are you still on?
Yeah, do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I really agree with Janice also about, you know, and also I agree with Council Thomas that the lack of supporting staff is critical. And I appreciate everything that they do. This is really an amazing commission that we have. And as I said before, they are making history. They're going to have a lot of work to do. But as Council Thomas said, maybe the lack of, you know, the director or the staff person make them work very hard. I'm not really familiar about, I haven't like follow-up their meeting for a long time. You know, and I don't know like what currently they are working on. But I understand that this is not easy. But as a previous person who was in a police review board before, when I was a substitute teacher, I'm going full-time to school with, you know, five children in my hand and low income. I was really putting a lot of time on, you know, the commission, the police review board. And I remember we spent a lot of hours just watching videos, like police cameras from many angles. And after that, reading the report of the police KIF and coming out of the decision. It's a lot. And on the time that I really needed money too, you know. It is, I was low income and, but I just respect that. All the commissions that we have in the city is just without us. This is really hard decision. I understand that a lot of them, they put a lot of times, but I can't feel what they say as a council members who are really low income. And I'm putting a lot of hours in this council too. And, you know, I remember when I joined the council, I lost my Medicaid because of this, like, only, not a lot of money, but that made me like crossing the border of the Medicaid. And for one year, I was without Medicaid until I got like my new job and I got insurance. And at that time, even with the money that the city gave me, I couldn't even buy my, you know, buy insurance from the city because it's expensive. You know, just the fact that when I choose this position, because I knew this is like volunteer. And I think the TRC members knew the same thing. You know, by any means, I really, this is for me a hard decision to make. But I just believe that all the commissions that we have is really just like without us. And everybody's really doing a lot of work. I understand that, like as, you know, Council Berger said, for the thing that they do, I don't know if you ever watched CPRB, you know, the police review board, also they do the same thing. They really have to look carefully on all the videos to find out if the, who is like really making the mistake if the police is just staying compliant or not. And coming up with, also like reading all the police KIF and sitting down and editing the report and do all this, it takes a lot of time. So many, I appreciate all the commissions in the city. We have over twenty-something commissions that I think everybody putting a lot of time and, you know, on these commissions without anything. I really going to say the same thing that Council, maybe, you know, Thomas said. We need really to focus now on hiring, you know, somebody to help them. After Jessica has left, we need to really think, like, for Liana, hiring somebody else for, to be the director or the manager of the project. And this is maybe going to take, you know, some like burden from the commissioners. And we go from there. At this time, I really am not supporting the stipends. Sorry.
I think, I've been struggling with this since it first came out. And my initial reaction was like a lot of people, that I was against it. We don't pay any of our other commissioners, et cetera. And I've had a lot of input from, you know, people within the community and that I really respect who are working in areas that said, you know, I started out thinking no, and now this is why I'm thinking yes. Maybe not at the level that they're requesting, but why it does make some sense. And you know me, lots of times I don't wait to go last. You know, chime in a little bit earlier in the conversation. And tonight, I've just really held back because I really did want to hear everybody else's comments to really try and help inform my thoughts on this. And John, for all the times that you and I disagree on various things, I think you really hit it on the head tonight when you talked about having a work plan that informs your budget. And certainly from what we are seeing, I can't say what the discussion has been because I have not listened to every meeting. But we're not seeing a work plan that is informing the budget. And the other comments from you and others about getting a facilitator slash program manager type person hired, I think makes a lot of sense in taking a huge load off from the commissioners. I think you said it well, that, you know, we sit here with a full staff and we listen to all that information. We don't have to do all the research. We get all that information. We have to read it and digest it and think about it. But then it's on us to make policy decisions. And right now, with not having that kind of support staff, they're trying to do it all. And they're also trying to do it as a brand-new commission with all new commissioners. I realize some of you came in at different times, but it's not like P&amp;Z or Parks and Rec or anything else where we tend to have staggered positions. You know, you come on, whether it's the council or any of our commissions, you usually come on and there's other people who've been there for two or three years or whatever. So a brand-new commission, tough start. You know, we don't have a facilitator in place and you're trying to do it all. So I get why you are, I would say, overwhelmed. Maybe you don't like that term and I don't mean to offend anybody with it. And so I think what I would recommend, I guess I would like to maybe go along with Janice's idea, is maybe let's get a meeting set up right away. Let's dig into some detail a little bit more and let's see where that facilitator and maybe if the RFP's already gone out, maybe too late, but maybe we look at either adding another position or if we can tweak it in that, a program manager. I think once we have those answers, that can help inform our discussion on the stipend better.
So we've heard from all the counselors. So maybe an easy start is, is the council willing to do a work session? Yes, so I'm seeing a majority say yes, and I'm sure heads are nodding on the phone.
Yes.
Great. And then in the meantime, I think at least for me personally, I feel like this discussion does inform a does inform a little bit to the commissioners to have some type of a baseline because they're going to meet before we meet again, the third week in August. It, it'd just give them a baseline for conversation, I believe. In the meantime, I'm not sure, I know they've been operating without transportation, compensation or for childcare. What the council consider? Some type of allocated funds, I mean, or, or do we, is, there's only one meeting between, I'm assuming there's only one meeting for the TRC between now and when we meet. So that could be, maybe we can go into that meeting and ask the commission, the TRC commission, if we can't determine an answer on the budget, if they can have at least that critical piece ready for us. Transportation and any childcare needs so that we can at least, you know, get the critical piece, that critical piece of any type of barrier addressed. And so would, so I don't know. I'm seeing some shaking of the heads because I think the, I don't anticipate this meeting will be over and done with potentially when we meet with the, them in the work session. Would we, so we'll do the work session. We'll check in with the commission, try to figure out if they can come the third week in August. And the other question would be, do we put this immediately back on the works, on our formal agenda that evening? I mean, we can certainly put it back on there and, but I don't feel like the commission will have a time to. I feel like i- if there are some things informed within that meeting, then they may want to, you know, we're going to be addressing concerns and having discussions at them, you know, in our meeting. And I don't feel like it will be changed at that time, but what are people thinking?
And we can always put it on as a placeholder and then we can always defer it. If it's not on, we can't do it, we can't take any action even if we're ready to. So I would suggest we put it on and knowing there might be better than 50/50 chance that we're going to defer it, but at least it's there if we're ready for it.
I'm seeing a majority present, I agree. So we'll put it on the agenda.
So you just want to go ahead and defer the resolution that's in front of you until August 17th?
Correct.
And then you can choose to defer it again at that time if you're not quite done with that discussion?
Correct.
So you'd need a motion to defer then?
Absolutely. So any other discussion on this before I entertain a motion?
I just had a kind of a logistical question that, you know, Stephanie's been providing a lot of staff support. And I know we talked about different places where the city resources can help step in, like with the videography and that kind of thing. So any immediate needs, I just want to sort of reassure the commission that it's not like there's no resources available, even if the budget isn't approved. But Jeff, can you just kind of explain how that works?
Yeah, I think any immediate needs, we can address just through the human rights budget, their, their office budget. So if there's some kind of incidental transportation costs or if there's some advertising costs like that, we're not going to necessarily have to wait for you all to approve the, the overarching budget to assist the commission. That's pretty typical with all of our commissions that, you know, we'll have the, the staff liaison's department kind of pick up some of those expenses as needed. I think it's the bigger picture items that are really going to need to come into focus with, for your future discussion with the, with the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. So I wouldn't get, I wouldn't get too worried about the, those more minor expenses. We can, we can definitely take care of that.
All right, any other comments? I'll entertain a motion to defer until August 17th, 2021?
So moved, mims.
Second, Taylor.
All in favor, well, we'll do a roll call, please.
It's a motion, so you can do voice vote if you wish. But we can do roll call if you wish to.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any oppose? Motion is deferred seven to zero. And can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved to Burgess.
Moved by Burgess, seconded by Salee. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 16 is petty cab lettering requirements. Ordinance amending Title V entitled Business and License Regulations. Chapter two entitled Taxi Cabs to allow for flexi, to allow for flexibility and the requirements for petty cash lettering. Can I get a motion for first consideration?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, mims.
And we don't have any staff comments on this tonight, I'm assuming? No. All right, any one from the public like to address this topic? If so, please come to the podium at this time. Oh, it's on a different item. Yep. And again, this is the petty cab lettering requirements item. Seeing no one else, seeing no one for this item. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 17 is liquor downtown tobacco penalty. This is a resolution assessing $300 civil penalty against liquor downtown. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Salee, was that seconded by Weiner? All right, you all got one in there. Would anyone from the, uh, public like to address this topic?
Yep, come on up, Sergeant. Come on up.
Oh, yep, okay.
Yes.
Hi, my name's Paul Bachelor. I'm with the Iowa City Police Department. I'm a sergeant there and one of my peripheral duties is to be in charge of our tobacco compliance program. Iowa City partners with the alcoholic beverages division under the I pledge program to cut down on the illegal sales of tobacco to people under age 21 and to solicit voluntary compliance amongst the businesses. This past year, federal law and then state law changed to 21 and only, 21 and up to get tobacco products purchased. In the past, it was 18 and we always used an undercover person who was age 16 or 17 to go in and do these compliance checks with us. In the spirit of that law changing and people possibly not being aware, this year I still did a 16, I still used a 16-year-old girl who looks 16 to go in. And we checked all 54 businesses. Three of them failed. In this instance, liquor downtown failed on July 9th, or I'm sorry, June 19th at 9:41 PM. The undercover or the underage person went and purchased a package of Juul vape things, whatever they're called, and that contained nicotine. The employee never asked for ID, never asked the girl her age and completed the sale, came out. We identified ourselves, ultimately charged the employee with providing tobacco to a person under age 21. And that employee then appeared with their attorney on June 23rd and pled guilty to that offense. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on the procedures we use or anything like that or any questions you might have. That's it in a nutshell. I'm trying to be brief because I know what time it is.
Great, any questions? Here are none, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? All right, counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. We are on to item number 18, which is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specifications are stated. 18A is Historic Preservation Commission at Large. We have, and we'll do probably these together as we normally do. And we have 18B, which is Human Rights Commission. The Human Rights Commission has one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment through December 31st, 2021. So for the item 18A, which is the Historic Preservation Commission at Large, there is one vacancy and it does have a gender requirement, which is male. And wanted to just open up to see what counselors are thinking. I will also add that for 18B, Human Rights Commission, there is one vacancy and that is a female gender requirement.
Well, with the Historic Preservation Commission, I'm inclined to support Frank Wagner in part because Quinton Pentson, who was a previous commissioner who is a contractor, is no longer on the commission. Frank is also skilled in construction. And, and so despite the fact that Frank has served before, I do think it might be difficult finding, I think it's important that there are commissioners who have those skills. And Frank has applied and so I would suggest that he, he would be a good candidate, given the fact that we don't have, to my knowledge, anyone on the commission now with those skills.
I would agree. I mean, that's when I look through the occupations, that looks like there's nobody now.
I agree also.
Me too.
I agree too.
All right. Sound like we have a majority support for Frank Wagner for the Historic Preservation Commission at Large. And can we go to 18B, which is the Human Rights Commission? We have a vacancy with a female requirement.
I guess I would throw out Kate Klefstad.
And I'd add, I guess Siri Brun to the mix. I mean, we had, you know, an incredible number of, of people applying, which is always this, this huge wealth. I'm so impressed by the number of people who are, who really want to do this.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of applicants and these two, you know, I, I don't totally remember all about them. So I think I'll have to just review them. Any other individuals that will be moved for consideration? And I'm sorry, Counselor Burgess, what is the, so Kate's last name is what?
Klefstad with a, oh, I may be pronouncing it wrong.
I got it, see it, yes.
Could you each maybe give us a quick blurb of why you're nominating that person?
Yeah, so she's a recent applicant. I always look at the date of application and kind of see if it's someone who's applied a longer time ago, I try and check with them to see if they're still interested. Hers is a recent application. So she works with the Johnson County Public Health. She's the clinical services manager there and just spoke compellingly about how she, you know, has sort of seen marginalized, worked with marginalized communities and has a good understanding of some of the challenges in our community that would inform her work with the commission and that she seemed to know what they're about.
And that I was, I was struck by Siri Brun. She's a relatively young teacher at City High, working with, with a variety of populations there, including English language learners, has applied before. And again, I, as, as with Counselor Burgess, I looked at the date of application. She renewed her application. She, she reached out, I believe she's the one who reached out to Stephanie Bowers to discuss it. And she's also really wants to get involved with the community, has been following city council meetings and other meetings. And so I, I really want to encourage young people who are already basically making a difference in the community to be able to extend that, including with her high school students.
I agree with Janice on that with Siri Brun.
Yeah, they both sound really good. I think Siri has my support though.
Yeah, I like Siri as well.
We have a majority. All right, great. We have a majority for Siri Brun. So could I get a motion to appoint?
I'll move that we appoint Frank Wagner to the Historic Preservation Commission and Siri Brun to the Human Rights Commission.
Second.
Mims moved and seconded by Salee. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 19 is announcement of vacancies previous. This is applicant, applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. And we have the Housing and Community Development Commission. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment through June 30th, 2022. Applications must be received by 5 PM Tuesday, August 10th, 2021. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals, licensed electrician, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. And this is at item number 20. And this is where we invite the USG to make some comments. So welcome.
Thank you. This is my first time getting to present. And so as the school year is coming up, you know, a lot of major things are happening. First and most importantly, we have a new president at the university as of the 15th, as well as Siri's a pretty major funding, P3 funding projects that were approved, including millions of funding going towards community engaged scholarship, which I figured might interest the council, as well as research. And then Anna and I have been working with the International Students Service Center to ensure vaccines are allowed for international students in particular. And they have access to that, and so that is a go. As well as we're encouraging every, as many people as possible to fill out our renters guide before that closes very soon, just to help us provide more transparency with renting and making everyone have a better experience. So that's all of my comments.
Great, well, welcome. Yes, all right. Item number 21, city council information and updates. The hour has far spent, is that, is that what I hear? Okay. Yes. All right, item number 22, anyone on the phone?
Nothing, it says five in the morning here.
You win, Mas.
You're a trooper.
Five ten.
All right. All right, item number 22, report on items from city staff, our city manager.
Nothing tonight.
Our assistant city manager.
Nothing.
City attorney.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
City clerk.
Only question I have, August meeting here.
Good question.
We didn't quite get to that in the work session.
Yeah, I think for me personally with potentially the mayor Protem coming back for the first meeting in August.
And some of the numbers are going up too.
Yeah.
I would say stay in here for one more at least.
I agree.
Yeah. All right. And then we're on, anything else? All right, item number 23, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
So moved, moved by Burgess, seconded by mims. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? We are adjourned, good evening everybody and thanks to everyone that, that joined us.